Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the October 17, 2006, meeting of the Glendale City Council being called to order at 6:02 PM. If we have your call, please.
Council members Manukian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Quintero?
Here.
Yusefian?
Here.
Mayor Weaver?
Here. The flag salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Manukian and the invocation by City Clerk Ari Kostakian.
Please join in the salute to our nation's flag. Ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
October 17, 2006 is Black Poetry Day. Traditionally, Black Poetry Day is celebrated with poetry readings that focus on the works of African-American poets. One of the best-known black poets was Jame Langston Hughes and is particularly known for his insightful, colorful portrayals of black life in America from the '20s through the '60s. His life and work were enormously important in shaping the artistic contributions of the Harlem Renaissance of the 1920s and influencing the civil rights movement. Tonight, I would like to preface our prayer with one of Hughes' poems entitled "Dreams." Dreams. Hold fast to dreams, for if dreams die, life is broken-winged bird that cannot fly. Hold fast to dreams, for when dreams go, life is a barren field with frozen snow. Tonight, I ask you to join us as we pray for our dreams to fly and for our community to share in its realizations. We pray that our council considers carefully our community's well-being and plans for its continuous prosperity as they deliberate on important issues facing them this evening. We pray that with wisdom and guidance, our dreams will fly to new heights and soar on the wings of our passion and hard work. Amen.
Okay. May we have your report?
The agenda for the October 17, 2006, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, October 12, 2006, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. And I apologize for that confusion. It was only because we also have a special meeting that we must call to order.
At the appropriate time. Okay, staff will be pulling, for the information of the audience, staff will be pulling items 5H and 8C. Anybody here for those? You're free to go home. Okay, what's next, please?
Next is a presentation and appointments. At 3:00 a.m. is agenda preview for a meeting of October 24, 2006.
And am I going to Mrs. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for October 24, for the Glendale Housing Authority, there are no business items on the agenda. For the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, business agenda, public hearing, Director of Development Services regarding the first amended and restated disposition and development agreement and declaration of reciprocal covenants, conditions, and restrictions, and easements for the Town Center Project Americana brand. There's a joint meeting of the City Council, Glendale Redevelopment Agency, and the Glendale Housing Authority. And this is discussion of in-lu fees for the San Fernando Road Corridor Redevelopment Project Area Inclusionary Housing Program. For the City Council agenda, we have Senator Jack Scott coming to do the State of the State address, presentation of the Blue Ribbon, distinguished schools recognition, and a proclamation designating November 1 as Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day. For consent items, we have the Director of Public Works regarding the Isabel Street Parking Lot Improvement Project. Under ordinances, we have an ordinance amending relating to the utility user tax exemptions. That's coming next week. Action items, City Treasurer, this is the City Treasurer's Quarterly Investment Review, and that's as of September 30 of 2006. City Attorney, this is a report regarding eminent domain proposition 90. Director of Administrative Services, Amendment to the City GCA Memorandum of Understanding. Director of Development Services, Proposed Landscape Maintenance District for North San Fernando Road Corridor. And lastly, Director of Planning, Conditional Use Permit Located at 2331 Ramsey Drive.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, this is a new one on me. I have a card on this item. This is where staff is telling us what's on the agenda, so...
It's your discretion, Mr. Mayor. I don't think it would be required because there's no council discussion deliberation or action on the...
Now, let's hear what it is. Barry Allen, two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's pretty difficult to get something up before you. I'm Barry Allen of Vanguard, and what I'm doing is I'm presenting to the mayor a certificate from Vanguard. And it's something we've all been waiting for, and if the public can see this. It's all suitable for framing if you can get the friends in. Anyways, Vanguard presents to Mayor Dave Weaver on this date, October 17.
Mr. Garcia, shouldn't this be done under oral communication?
Yeah, it's not related to the item of the agenda preview. That's correct.
That's correct. Please bring it back up, but oral communications, your card's the first on the list for that, I think.
Oh, my gosh, and this, I really wanted to get it under presentations, but...
That's an improper location. Thank you.
The City Attorney says no, right? Okay, so we'll do that under oral communications.
It's not privy to agenda, has nothing to do with the agenda for next week. Okay, what is next?
Under presentations, 3B?
No.
I think those are our presentations.
Oh.
Yes. Okay, what is next, please?
Next is 3B, proclamation designating October 26 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you. And I'll be presenting, the proclamation will be presented to Margot Batcher and First Vice President Seroptimus International Glendale, and three other optimists.
My sisters.
Let me read through the proclamation, and listen to Jari and I'll bring it down. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and whereas excluding cancers of the skin, breast cancer is the most common cancer among women, accounting for nearly one in three cancers diagnosed in U.S. women, and whereas an estimated 270,000 new cases of female breast cancer were diagnosed while an estimated 1,600 new cases of male breast cancer were diagnosed in 2005, and that mammography is recognized as the most effective method of detecting breast changes that may be cancer long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. And whereas the Seroptimus Breast Cancer Awareness Campaign is an ongoing effort to promote awareness, advocacy, and action, and that Seroptimus are in a position worldwide to educate everyone, especially women, that early detection through mammography and breast self-exam, self-exams greatly improve treatment options and the chances for successful treatment and survival. And whereas Seroptimus International Glendale will be holding its fourth annual Bra, Bras for Cause coming up event on April 14, 2007, to raise awareness and funding for the Glendale Eventus Medical Center, Glendale Memorial Hospital, and Verdugo Hills Hospital Breast Cancer Centers. Thus, therefore, I, Dave Weaver, Mayor of the City Glendale, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2006 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month with special recognition, Seroptimus, for their various contributions to the many communities for advancement of human rights and dissemination of information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to present the City Council's proclamation to the Seroptimists who are working for a very worthy cause, to promote awareness, advocacy, and action for breast cancer, and working hard to educate everyone regarding this terrible affliction. And I would like to express my congratulations, as well as that of the entire City Council for your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, councilmen, and staff. My name is Margot Batcher, and I am a very proud Seroptimist of Glendale, of the Glendale International Club. I'm proud to accept this proclamation for breast cancer awareness. As you know, breast cancer, this breast cancer awareness campaign that we have originated in our region with the Color Me Purple campaign that our own Jim, Governor Edith Fuentes, brought to Seroptimus when she was governor of our region. This allows us to bring education and awareness to our local communities. And as you've already mentioned, we do have our Bras for Cause coming up on April 14 at the Oakmont Country Club, and we hope that you will all be there. In the last three years, we have raised over $45,000 for our three local hospitals, and they have been able to provide breast screening for low-income, free breast screening for low-income families, and also used our donated funds to procure equipment to help detect breast cancer. We welcome the City Council, the residents of Glendale, clubs, and the whole community to take part in decorating a bra for upcoming event. Please pay attention to your local newspaper for advertising of such. And if you don't want to decorate a bra, you can always be a sponsor, and we can again look for another successful year with breast cancer. Thank you again.
Thank you. You've never been to it. You ought to go to this one.
You need to come.
It's jammed. The place is jammed.
It's a wonderful event. It's wonderful for your heart.
Kathy came up with a real great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a present appointment tomorrow.
Okay. Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Mayor, under the presentation and appointments, I would like to place the name of Mr. Frank Murphy to be nominated for reappointment to the Audit Committee on the agenda for next week.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Under the appointments, as you know, Mr. Quintero and I have been on the GWP for a while. It seems that neither one of us can agree on an individual, so the customary process is that we ask the city clerk to come up with a different panel.
Next one on the rotation, okay?
Maybe they can.
So done. I guess that'll be on the selection for next week.
Yeah. Hopefully on the election.
Okay. Okay, moving very long. What's next, please?
Next is City Councilor staff comments.
Comments? Mr. Yusefian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, as you know, we started this year's with our 100-year anniversary. As part of our 100-year anniversary, there was a local artist that was born and raised in Glendale, later on moved to Agora Hills, and she's currently there, but she happened to be a very good artist. And she has been doing watercolors that, the original has been given to the city, and the copy was auctioned off at a nonprofit organization, first one being Bras for Cause. That was the first one that was offered and auctioned off. The second was Chamber of Commerce. And the last one that happened this weekend actually went to, what was it, New Horizons. And I must say that the copy actually sold for $1,250, a good amount of money to be used for a nonprofit organization. So at this time, for the people who were unable to show up to New Horizons, they don't know what the third copy is. I brought this in here. It was donated to the city, and Mr. McFaul accepted it, but here's the picture. As you can see, this is our airport. This is where our aviation started. So it all started in Glendale, when we got into the planes, and we went from one place to another, and all commercial aviation started from our Glendale Terminal. It doesn't look like this right now, because it is all boarded up until Disney gets to it and remodels it, but this is, we tried to find some pictures from the past, and the artist has done a very good job of trying to show what it looked like in its glory days. So it's another historical one. The next item will be auctioned off and also revealed at the Symphony's fundraiser. And so people who attend that, they'll see it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Mr. Najarian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you know my feelings generally about limiting our focus on City Council to issues of municipal or local concern, but I'm going to break that rule this time and expand my comments beyond the county, beyond the state, beyond the national level, and discuss something of international and worldwide significance. And, Mr. Mayor, what I'm getting at is I'd like to congratulate the winner of the Nobel Prize for Literature, Mr. Orhan Pamuk, who is a Turk. That might be strange, you say, an Armenian congratulating a Turk. But this gentleman had the foresight and the fortitude to speak out and write about the history of the Turkish government, the Ottoman Empire, as well as some of their modern governments' dealings, number one, with the massacre of the Armenians, and secondly, with the destruction of many Kurdish villages and murder of many Kurds. He was put on trial in Turkey by the government for speaking out against the government, but he had the fortitude to do so, and I'm happy to say and agree with the Nobel Prize Committee that he was an excellent choice. And I think there's always room in this world for people to speak out for the truth against somewhat insurmountable odds. So my congratulations to Mr. Orhan Pamuk.
I think I read something about that, too. Very good. Okay, if there's no other comments, what is next, please?
Next is consent items, including minutes of following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed. And I believe one of the items was pulled by staff, and there is a card submitted.
A through G.
And was there, I believe there was a card submitted, or was it for 5H?
Yes, I already pulled it out.
There is no cards?
There was a card, but we pulled, the staff has pulled the item off.
And with that, I'll move consent calendar.
Second. Discussion, roll call, please.
Council members Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. What is next, please?
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City Manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, as I did last week, Barry Allen is number one card, but last week, I got Sparky in here so he could get out of the hot uniform. Now I'm seeing a duck out there in a hot uniform. So who is here with the duck?
Was that a duck?
John Sad.
Well...
Oh, I think that's a full-size duck.
John?
That's a real duck.
Whoever else is coming, bring the duck in, so he can, he or she can get out of that warm outfit.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council and staff. My name is John Sad, and I'm here on behalf of the Kiwanis Club of Glendale, and I'm also here with Doris Tweed, as you well know, and I'm also here with Quacky the Duck.
Oh, Quacky.
And appearing in the role of Quacky the Duck this evening is our own Vic Ledger Tuck.
Ah, that's why it's tall. That's a tall duck.
And we're here to tell you about the Kiwanis Incredible Duck Splash that will take place this Saturday from 10 to 3 at Verdugo Park in beautiful Lake Glendale. Now, as you know, Lake Glendale doesn't exist right now, but Saturday morning, the members of the club are going to build this lake that will be the racing ground for 30,000 of these little rubber ducks. The winning duck will receive a Toyota Yaris automobile. There will be a number of other prizes, and one of the ducks will be eligible to be in a drawing to be the million-dollar duck. So there will be fun, food, and games for everyone. Now, as I say, these little ducks will be racing in the race. We had scheduled Ducky to be in the race, but we did a steroid test, and unfortunately, Ducky didn't pass that. In addition to the Kiwanis Club of Glendale, there are 70 organizations that are participating with us as our duck buddies, and those organizations are sharing in the proceeds. So it'll be an event that not only benefits the organizations that Kiwanis supports, but many, many other organizations throughout the city. So we encourage all of you to attend the duck race on Saturday at, from 10 to 3, at Verdugo Park, and we also encourage you to adopt one of these little ducks. They're $5 apiece, or the popular quack pack is $25, which is six ducks. And we appreciate the support and appreciate the time this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the family pack is only 100.
Okay.
And how many ducks do you get for that?
100?
25.
25. The duck talks.
A talking duck.
Yeah. Thank you. Now you can get cooled off. Okay. That's Barry Allen, followed by Ofken Babrian, I believe it is. Babrian.
Ofik.
Ofik Babrian.
Babayan.
Was that a name?
Ofik Babayan.
This guy looks similar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard, and I guess we're going to have to talk really fast today. And before we go too far, I'd like you to know that Vanguard will be featured on the Larry Zarian Forum this coming Thursday. That's Channel 26 on Charter. But I want to do a couple of things. Among them, of course, is to present this certificate to Dave Weaver. Mayor Weaver today acknowledging his lack of knowledge, understanding, and support of the Constitution of the United States. So suitable for framing, and let me give this to Mr. Kostakian. And then let's move to the heart of the talk, and some of this came by way of Councilmember Yusefian last week. The time has come to replace Dave Weaver as the appointed mayor of Glendale. Each week is animus toward the public, is more vivid and more pronounced. Who should become the new mayor? Mr. Manukian was the prior and now sits on the Airport Commission, along with Bob Yusefian. Mr. Najarian is busy with Home Hearth Children and the MTA. That leaves Frank Quintero.
I have a day job, too.
There you go. See, you're the only one, right?
Before you go any further, I'm not interested, so...
He has the time. He's no longer committed to running the State Assembly. Why should Weaver be replaced? Because he's an embarrassment to the city of Glendale. He's failed to be accountable by accepting money and services from the city and from people with business before the city. Before you say innocent until proven gilding, remember, these are civil charges, not criminal, like the failure to file your income tax. Of course, based on intent, that could become a criminal matter. Ignorance of this 10-year-old law is no bar, could be a defense. Section 82015 of the Political Reform Act has been in effect since 1997. This section requires a Glendale-elected official to notify the city clerk whenever the official accepts $5,000 or more from any entity for any cause other than a campaign contribution. As an example, Mr. Yusefian was handed a check for $10,000 made out to the city of Glendale for the Unity Fest. Mr. Yusefian has 30 days in which to provide the clerk with the following information: name and address to the payer, amount of the payment, date or dates of the payment or payments, the name and address of the payee, a description of the goods, services provided or purchased, a description of the specific purpose or event that the payment has been made. According to the FPPC, that's what you got to do, whether there's a form or not. Mayor Weaver, in his capacity as an elected official, has accepted money and services on behalf of the Glendale Roadboat Association, Dreaming of Roses, a nonprofit organization for which donations are not tax-deductible unless taken as a business expense, and Virgilia Productions, Inc., the Miss Asia Pageant, a for-profit corporation. The mayor has not filed at all for any of the monies he has received. The excuse that there is no form available is not a justification, according to the FPPC. So the city of Glendale provided services and facilities and products costing at least $10,000. Charter Communications provided services in the amount of $15,000. Royal Palace Banquet Hall provided services, facilities, and products for Miss Asia in the amount of $20,000, and Mr. Weaver's daughter's reception for about 300 people. They will be receiving $40,000 for a SOT improvement from the city. ABC, Channel 7, for five years, provided services, facilities, and products. Mark Nathanson of Charter Communications and Verdugo Gardens made monetary contributions. Dorn Platts provided facilities for Miss Asia. San Gabriel Valley Transit provided buses. Ben Vani, John Gregg, gave $12,500 after receiving millions from the city. Dreaming of Roses, according to the IRS, there was $50,000 that was not accounted for by Mr. Weaver, wedding guests from people without a pre-existing relationship with Weaver's daughter. The mayor has not filed the required information for any of the monies he has received. The city of Glendale provides Mayor Weaver with a money tree for he and his friends. This information has been provided to the Fair Political Practices Commission for its continuing investigation of Dave Weaver. Mr. Weaver, it's your call. Resign or be removed. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard.
Next speaker, Ofik Babrian.
Mr. Allen, for your information, the check I received, I've received several checks for Unity Fest this year. None of them have been over $5,000. I think there is three that is $5,000. And the gentleman that day that brought the check was $5,000.
Was it $5,000?
And I will be reporting that with the city clerk as soon as there is that form that I fill out.
Right. You had mentioned there was no form, but the FPP says as long as you follow the statute and put that information in. And they are working on a form, by the way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ofik? Ofik? Followed by Bonnie Adams?
Hello, good evening. Yes, me, Ofik Babrian.
I will be translating for Ms. Babyan today.
Yes, I'm a girl.
She says before she starts, she has an issue with her housing situation, but before she begins, she wants to thank this country, thank the United States government for always taking care of its seniors and not sparing any expense in making sure that the senior citizens of this country are well taken care of, and she prays for the prosperity and well-being of this country every evening. This is one of the, Glendale's one of the most beautiful cities, and it's due to its leadership, and she wants to thank you as well. She says that she hopes that this evening you'll take into consideration her condition, her ailments, and her age. Her issue is with her living situation right now, which is she is currently residing at, she has Section 8, she receives Section 8 subsidized housing, but the cost of rent is continuously rising, albeit in small increments, and she would much rather live in the senior apartments, the Kenwood address, because it's more understanding to the living conditions. Currently, the cost of living is going up, and that's affecting her rent situation in spite of the Section 8.
I'm a girl.
She says that she hopes that she is addressing you, and you won't ignore her, and that there'll be a response to her request. She awaits your response and thanks you for your time and patience with her.
Thank you. Staff's taking notes. Just tell her that you need any other information, phone or...
Mr. Mayor, we're not, of course, not aware at this point in time, but she's always spoke to the Section 8 staff community development, but we will make sure the housing staff talks to her, and we'll find out what her options may be.
Okay. Next speaker, Bonnie Adams, followed by Sheila McNichols. Next speaker, Bonnie Adams, followed by Sheila McNichols.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Adams. First of all, I would like to very much congratulate the Seroptimists for their breast cancer awareness efforts. And it's very close to me because I'm a breast cancer survivor, and my sister still has breast cancer. And this is something that is, I'm still taking preventives and all kinds of things for, but my treatment is different than hers is. And, but I'm so glad that this is, they've been recognized. Also, Mayor Weaver, did I hear you say last week that you adopted a dog?
Yes, I've adopted many dogs.
Did you?
Many, many.
Well, I'm so glad because a couple of weeks ago, we just adopted another kitty. We have three rescues. And I urge everyone that can possibly afford it and are able to do this to see these animals and the Glendale Shelter. Does Glendale contribute any money to the shelters, to the shelter?
Not to the Glendale Shelter.
Huh?
We have a contract with the Pasadena Humane Society.
Oh, but the new Glendale, the remodeled Glendale Shelter is beautiful, and it's very nice and clean. And I urge everybody to go down there and see it. They just opened a new kitty room, and they, you don't, it's as clean as a whistle in there. And they have dogs and cats and who knows what else down there, but it is really very, very nice what they've done. I urge everybody that can either go to Pasadena or Glendale, wherever, or Burbank, to rescue an animal that needs a home. That's one of my real passions, and I have to give you credit where it's due, Mayor Weaver, because I don't agree with a lot of your stuff, but I'll have to give you credit where it's due. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila McNichols, followed by John Drayman.
Evening, Mayor and City Council members. It's nice to see all of you again. I'm here today representing the Glendale Buck and Ballot Brigade, and I'd like to extend an invitation to each of you and the community to join us this coming Saturday after you do the ducky thing. You can come up and see us. We'll be up in La Cañada at the Jeffers Home honoring our local military volunteers and heroes, people who have served in the community and come back, people who are leaving to go again to serve the community. And especially, we're gonna be honoring Lieutenant Colonel Nancy Sumner, who's one of our own incredibly wonderful people who recently received a Bronze Star, and we're gonna honor her especially. It's $25. We would like to know if you're coming. If you want to give us a call at 818-554-0308. We welcome all of you.
It's decided.
Pardon?
Friday or Saturday?
What is the date again?
Saturday.
Saturday.
Two to four. And I have some invitations here that I'll leave.
I'll pay for Mr. Menuchyan's admission.
I'll make that notation on the list and hope to see you there, Mr. Menuchyan.
Thank you. John Drayman, followed by Margaret Hammond.
My name is John Drayman. I'm a resident of the city of Glendale. As citizens, we share a common stake in this city, its future and how we are to be represented. I grew up in this city. I attended the Glendale Schools, and I'm a second-generation owner of a small family business here. I have lived in this city and advocated on behalf of the people of this city my entire adult life. And in that time, like many of you and many of the people sitting in the chamber, I have seen city councils come and go. In the past, however, as citizens, whether we agreed or disagreed with those councils, we could count on them to represent the interests of our city in a manner that was dignified, professional, and respectful. Today, by contrast, the words "city council" are becoming synonymous with the words frustration, conflict, and, as we have seen in the last several weeks, political paranoia. Mostly, I will say, issuing from the lips of our current mayor, with uncalled-for and unprofessional sniping, badgering, and baiting of citizens, staff, and even other council members. And I not only believe we can do better, I believe we must do better. And for that reason, I am taking this opportunity in this chamber to formally announce my candidacy for the Glendale City Council in 2007. In doing so, representing the interests of ordinary citizens will be my first priority. And I pledge that all matters of and interests will flow from that priority. I pledge that all matters of economic development, public advocacy, and the allocation of municipal resources will also flow from that priority. If elected, I will lead openly, forthrightly, and creatively, and at the end of the day, I will embrace the needs and aspirations of ordinary citizens, not because I believe I should do so, but because I possess such passion to improve the quality of life for the people of Glendale that I simply must do so. Our local government is meant to be our most available form of representation for the people of Glendale, and yet the leadership of this council, its mayor, has become increasingly remote, increasingly politicized, and increasingly dismissive of his own constituency. In the meantime, the real issues, the choking traffic congestion in our city streets, to which Councilmember Yusefian referred to at the last meeting, encroachment in our hillsides, a sense of growing disconnect with the values and traditions of the city, have all become the hallmark of an entrenched status quo, which simply points to a survey to dismiss it all by claiming that 90% of our constituency just adore what you all are doing. Well, look around you, Mr. Mayor. Ask your fellow council members whether they truly believe that 90% of the citizens of Glendale agree on any one thing, except perhaps that motherhood is a good idea. I say to everyone listening, no matter what civic issues lie closest to your heart, ultimately their solution or their continued lack of resolution boils down to two words: city council. And so the question becomes, what do we, as citizens, do to address the issues of importance to us when our elected officials will not? And the answer is to vote for candidates who understand that the power and trust invested in our city council flows from the ground up, from ordinary citizens who live in our city and invest their personal assets and resources in their neighborhoods every day just to build a better life for themselves and their families. And it is to these citizens that I pledge my advocacy. Lastly, as a candidate, I promise to uphold the contract I make with the citizens of Glendale to expend the political capital that they invest in me by advocating on their behalf, not because it's the politically expedient thing to do, but because it is the right and fair and decent thing for a public servant to do. So I ask you to speak to your family and friends, your neighbors and your coworkers, and let them know that there is another approach to local government, a better, more reasonable, more hospitable, less combative, and more embracing alternative to representation by browbeating, upon which our current mayor chooses to rely. We can do better. Our citizens know it, the rest of the council knows it, and the people in this chamber know it. I ask you to join with me in bringing about a mandate for a change in our local city government. My name is John Drayman. I thank you for your time, and I thank you in advance for your support.
Margaret Hammond, followed by Nancy Kent.
When is the election anyway? April?
Sometime in April, next year.
April 4th.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and staff.
Yeah.
And the viewers out there. We must take into account what Mr. Drayman said and really think seriously what's going on at City Hall. But I do want to bring up a fashion show that is going to be held up at the Castaways on November the 3rd. And it's going to be, it's sponsored by the Patrons Club of Glendale Community College. All the money that we receive goes straight for scholarships, and we have done it for many years and have helped many needy students. There will be door prizes, opportunity tickets, including a chance for a $1,000 drawing, cash drawing, and a silent auction. Very important how many students are helped. And when you meet them and see them and talk to them, you know how much they appreciate it. They send us letters, and they come to our meetings, and they are very grateful. Some of them say it was just that little bit more that helped them to get through their schooling. If you call Betty at 243-0908, there are still some tickets at $35 for the luncheon available, which is reasonable when you consider you get the fashion show and also all the wonderful prizes that are available. Thank you very much for that. Now, on to the banquet halls. You know, traffic and parking, those were the big stumble blocks.
Margaret...
Pardon me?
Banquet halls, well, this is just the grilling portion, so you're going to the broad. Okay, go ahead.
I never mentioned grilling. I'm smart enough for that.
I connected the two together.
There we go. Okay, banquet halls in general. We're still talking about the Montrose Collections. We're talking about the Phoenix being allowed to open. I understand there's another one where there possibly could be an application from Clancy's, all without enough parking, over and over, without enough parking. I mean, it's unbelievable. That's what the whole thing is in the city. Everybody's beef is the parking and the traffic and what happens to people, the aggravation and the terrible things that people say and do just to get a lousy parking spot. It's, I'm not even gonna go into a story of what I experienced trying to get through on a traffic on my own street, just head-on fighting, just to even drive through a street because there were cars on both sides of the street. So you're not, this is not, no good. It's no good at all what you're doing to downtown. And with the town center, you haven't added any more streets. How can you get any more streets and you're gonna add 15,000 more cars a day? I mean, it's wacky. We're going nowhere on this thing. And you keep telling me, oh, yeah, we're looking at this and looking at that. Well, I keep driving up and down and finding that it gets worse and worse, and that's without the town center. Now, on to the town center. I also have information that Mr. Caruso is now demanding that he have charge of our public park in that town center. Well, we knew that that was probably going to come because he had mentioned that, and when I mentioned it at planning, that he was going to be able to say who could come and go in that park and who would be able to put on an event or who would be able... I didn't believe that we ended up, after giving him almost $100 million in property, that we're gonna end up giving him our park on top of it. That is not right, gentlemen, and you know it's not right. The $100 million was bad enough, which it'll come out to in the long run by the time he takes in Orange and Harvard and everything else. As I always called it, it was the Caruso Fort, Fort Caruso. You're only gonna be able to go in on Harvard, in and out on Harvard. And what will the traffic be like on brand? What is it like now when we drive up and down? It's unbelievable. And we're right back to the same old thing, giving away our property, not enough parking, not enough streets to have people enjoy the quality of life in Glendale that we should have, that I had when I came here, I'm glad to say. So many people come to me and say, oh, do you remember what it was like, how wonderful it was, what a great city. It was a wonderful little town, not just a city. I thought of it as a town coming from a big city like Toronto, which was internationally a large city. I love this town. I could've lived anywhere I wanted, and I still can, and I still love this town. And I hope that the people out there will stand up for their rights and do, make the city council do what's right for the city. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ngerian?
Margaret, I have to say I agree with you. The Patrons Club is an excellent organization, and I better put my plug in because Darlene is on the committee, and I know you do an excellent job, you and your committee members, Betty and the rest, work very hard.
And Arroyo, Betty, yes, they're wonderful.
And as well. And if anyone in the community is interested, really interested in education and providing opportunities to a lot of young people that may not otherwise have the chance to do so, this fashion show is an excellent attempt to do it. It lasts through the afternoon, but you can get there for lunch.
Lunch.
And have a few mixing.
Around till around 3:00.
And before you go, Margaret, I'd like everyone at home to see that wonderful brooch you have on. I don't know if the camera picks it up, but it's a, it's a young lady wearing a hat.
It was a friend of mine gave me that.
So, so thanks, Margaret, for your hard work on that.
Nancy Kent, followed by Bill Farrell.
My name is Nancy Kent. I'm a resident of Glendale. And at the city council meeting last week, October 10th, right after Barry Allen spoke, Mayor Weaver spoke for quite a while about the requests for public information that Barry Allen has made. And Mayor Weaver described the file folder of these requests that's two inches thick in the city clerk's office, and he's heard city staff speaking about the number of requests Mr. Allen makes. Then Mayor Weaver read some of the specific descriptions of Mr. Allen's recent requests for public information. This went on so long that one of the other council members joked, you're not going to read the whole two inches, are you? I do not always agree with what Barry Allen says here. In fact, sometimes I strongly disagree with which concerns he's raising, and I disagreed with something that he said tonight. But I support his right to free speech, and I think it's an issue of concern that I feel a need to state here that I support his right to make perfectly legal requests for public information. Based on the frequency Mr. Allen speaks at city meetings and the fact that he writes a newsletter about Glendale municipal issues, it's obvious that he's doing something with the information he's requesting. He's not just requesting something for a malicious plan to tie up city staff time. I'd like to express my personal opinion about what Mayor Weaver did last week and whether Mayor Weaver agrees with my opinion or disagrees, right or wrong, it's my opinion. With all due respect, I thought Mayor Weaver's comments last week about Barry Allen's requests for public information were a blatant example of an attempt to harass and intimidate a member of the public by an elected official. When I went to school, we frequently got the message, like in the Norman Rockwell paintings, that good citizens do what they can to participate in government. In 2006, most people are too busy putting food on the table and making mortgage payments, rent payments, raising children, or caring for elderly relatives to pay attention to civic issues. But when someone does, he should not be harassed. If he states facts that are incorrect, he should be countered with the correct facts rather than intimidation by a public official. Last week, shortly after Mayor Weaver's attempt to publicly harass Barry Allen, Councilman Yusefian expressed an opinion similar to mine and was met with what I would call hostility from Mayor Weaver, who eventually stopped Councilman Yusefian's comments by declaring him out of order. Now, if Councilman Yusefian had also been speaking against Barry Allen last week, which he was not, Councilman Yusefian was confirming the right of the public to request public information. But if Councilman Yusefian had been speaking against Barry Allen, I wonder if Mayor Weaver would still have declared Councilman Yusefian out of order. And yes, Mayor Weaver also has free speech rights, so he does have the right to harass and intimidate members of the public and the right to get angry with people who point out what he's doing. Mayor Weaver also has the free speech right, which he chose to exercise about three weeks ago, aimed at Herbert Milano, to make a general statement accusing a speaker of not being a truthful person. And this was done when Mr. Milano was walking to his seat and did not have the legal right to respond at that meeting to this public insult. Saying what I'm saying now is not comfortable for me, but when an elected official is attempting to intimidate members of the public, others should speak up, as Councilman Yusefian did. If Mayor Weaver has facts to refute what speakers say at this microphone, let's hear those facts. And if city staff members are getting too many requests for public information, perhaps it's overdue that we revise the budget to cut some of the bread and circuses-type items if we need more city staff to respond to requests for public information. if we need more city staff to respond to requests for public information. If there's a choice between our city government entertaining us or responding to requests for public information, let's drop some of the entertainment elements from the budget. Thank you.
Bill Farrell followed by John Muir.
Bill Farrell, and I live in La Cressena, and I'm representing the Glendale Community Concerts. And an observation I have, do any of you remember John Beach? Any of you? Yeah, do you? I think you've had a lot of replacements for John Beach. But...
He still sends emails.
Yeah, I know. Anyway, he's a good guy, and he means well. Anyway, the reason I'm here is I just want to bring to your attention, I failed to get here before our last concert when we had a fantastic pianist and comedian. He's on the, like Victor Borge used to be, it was a real good concert. But I want to tell you about the one that I have coming up here this next Sunday. I've been pursuing this young man for a number of years because we had him a number of years ago, and he was very popular. Everybody wanted me to bring him back, and I couldn't find him. And I finally found out why I couldn't find him. He had moved to Chicago, and he's an airlines pilot, one of the big airlines. He's a pilot, and he's traveling around all the time. And I caught him in between flights, and he's going to perform for us this next Sunday at the Glendale High School Auditorium at 2:30. And I just wanted to let you know that. And also, I want to remind everybody that's watching the television, we have a website, And if you have any other questions, we have a secretary that'll be glad to answer those for you, (248) 3133. And I just hope that many of you can come. I've invited you many times. A few times, some of you have come. And I hope that I took a few minutes today on a little bit of a lighter side than what's been going on here the rest of the night. But those, I passed out for you all to read. There's no date? Oh, that's, okay, it's this Sunday, it's this Sunday, the 22nd. This Sunday, the 22nd, at 2:30. And you all can be my guests. Yes, yes, love to have all of you. And thank you again. And Mayor Weaver, the only thing I have against you is you're an engineer.
Yes, I guess unfortunately I am.
Seem I remembered that somewhere in the past.
Thank you. Next speaker, John Muir, followed by Ron Farina.
Good evening. My name is John Muir, and I'm a Glendale resident. Week after week, members of the Glendale community address this council with questions, questions they feel are important enough to give up their evening and sit and await their opportunity to speak. Week after week, most of these members of the community leave this chamber with a sense of frustration because the answers are not forthcoming to their questions. But speakers keep coming back, asking more questions, expecting accountability from our elected officials, and perhaps some just believing in the law of averages and hoping they'll get lucky. I haven't seen any winners yet here tonight, but will continue to ask the question, why? With increasing frequency, our council members have adopted the practice of taking sides during public contact periods, acting as an advocate for a project, sometimes going to absurd lengths to justify their recommendations and decisions. And the public, again, can only ask why. The last couple of months have given us numerous examples of this practice, however, no better case in point than the discussions surrounding the proposed zoning change for 702 East Glen On January 23rd, 2006, Minus and Delida Karuglian, and I apologize to them if I've mispronounced their name, operating MK Design filed a request to operate a family business at 702 East Glen Oaks. An interesting timeline follows. March 9th, Upremian Consulting, a consultant for MK Design, makes a $300 contribution to Mr. Menuchyan's campaign. March 13th, Kareen Vismagian, an attorney for MK Design, makes a $300 contribution to Mr. Menuchyan's campaign. March 13th, the first planning commission hearing on the Karuglians' application. March 19th, Harut Karuglian, manager for MK Design, makes a $300 contribution to Mr. Menuchyan's campaign. April 21st, Minus and Delida Karuglian hold a fundraiser for Mr. Menuchyan citing a non-monetary contribution of $2,150 to Mr. Menuchyan's campaign. April 27th, MK Design contributes $300 to Mr. Menuchyan's campaign. May 2nd, the Karuglian's zoning request is continued by the city council due to a protest filed by a neighbor of the Karuglians. May 30th, second council hearing continued pending a request for documentation by city attorney for legal opinion pertaining to the calculation of the 20% frontage in unanimous voting requirement for council. June 11th, Mr. Menuchyan, excuse me, July 11th, Mr. Menuchyan moved to continue the zoning request until December, at which time Mr. Najarian could vote, thus meeting unanimous vote of the council requirement. That motion died for lack of a second. Subsequently, zoning change 2006-003 was denied. July 25th, on Mr. Menuchyan's motion, a special ordinance is introduced to refund a portion of the Karuglians' application fees. August 1st, ordinance number 5530 permitting for a refund of planning application fees to Mr. and Mrs. Karuglian is adopted. I'm not here to question the timing of the contributions, nor the propriety of Mr. Menuchyan's campaign to accept them. However, I am concerned by the precedent set by this council action. One of the reasons cited by Mr. Menuchyan for the return of the application fees to the Karuglians is because city staffers provided Mr. Menuchyan with erroneous information when he was first approached by the Karuglians for advice prior to them submitting their application. The Karuglians reiterated at two council meetings that they would not have gone forward with their plans had it not been for the reassurance from Mr. Menuchyan that their application was in order. Some would say this is old business and to move on. I suggest it's very timely. Last Saturday's edition of the Glendale news press featured an article on Mountain Oaks and referred to Mr. Menuchyan's participation in a meeting with the developers without mention of the inclusion of city staff. Though the article did not mention the attendees by name and therefore the extent of the political contributions in the meeting is unknown. My fear is that we may have another instance of a city council member acting outside of official status resulting in potential liability to the city.
Sir.
Thank you.
So you can always come back?
No, that's fine. And thank you very much for letting me have the additional 10 seconds here. I appreciate it.
Mr. Menuchyan?
Comment. And that's regarding what Nancy Kent said regarding staying quiet when there are issues in front of council. And in the past, I've always been, I've always assumed that, and I'm not, I'm not going to respond to you.
Can I? Okay, thank you.
I've always assumed that because we are quiet, it doesn't automatically mean that we agree on what's, the way the meeting is run or the way an individual council member responds to a certain issue that is brought up in the city council. But I, but I see that our being quiet in situations like that gives the wrong impression. So I will try to do better next time in terms of responding on some of these issues when they happen. So Nancy, I do agree with you on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Ron Farina?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and city council members and staff and all those in the viewing audience. I wanted to take an opportunity in the kind of the aftermath of the Hawaii earthquake to just make a pitch for disaster preparedness to fellow community members, that there are things that we can do to prepare. It's kind of at the forefront of our mind, maybe in the, in the few days since that's happened. If you've watched the news, you've seen how quickly the lines formed outside of supermarkets for water, for batteries, how quickly the air and ground transportation sort of ground to a halt. And we know in the Red Cross and the city knows this as well, that we just can't take care of all of the people that will be affected by even a small disaster, sometimes even a power outage will cause a lot of damage and cause a lot of pain and suffering for the people that are without power, that are losing food and groceries in their, in their refrigerator. So take a moment, if you will, think about things that you can do locally to prepare. We suggest, Red Cross, that you make a plan. Talk to the people that are around you, your family, your friends, people who live in your neighborhood about how you can support one another, what you can do now to put together a kit, some supplies that you would need in an emergency. You can start off small. You don't have to go to the store to buy them all at one time, but to try to put together some of those essential items that are going to help you through almost any emergency. So we're not talking only about an earthquake. We're talking about power outages and landslides and floods and so forth, all the things that can happen in this wonderful community. There's also training available. There's information available that an individual should obtain to know how to take care of emergencies, even small first aid situations that come up. With the tremendous fire department that we have here and the rescue ambulances and the EMS system that's prevalent in this community, a major emergency can occur with just, with just a few minutes that it'll take for an emergency to get out of hand, a small cut, a heart attack, when those minutes count, you need to know what to do. So I just thought I'd take this opportunity because I know that after an earthquake, people are talking about, gee, that isn't it funny how it happened in Hawaii and, and those poor people over there. But it's just a matter of time before we have something that occurs, small or large, in this community. And preparedness is going to be so important to the response and the recovery of individuals. While I have the floor, if I can just make a pitch for our upcoming comedy night, it's the 15th Annual Fritz Coleman Comedy Night. It is going to be taking place on Sunday, November the 5th. It's going to be at 6:00 PM at the Glendale Center Theater. Tickets are only $20. Fritz always lines up a great array of stand-up comics, usually four or more, and you can get them at the Red Cross website, www.arcglendale.org, or call our office at (243) 3121. For more information about where to go on tips for disaster preparedness before, during, and after, I invite you to go to the Red Cross public website, www redcross.org. Thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Yusefian?
I'm glad that Mr. Farina came up because there was something that I was supposed to do. I always had it in back of my mind, what was I supposed to do? What I was supposed to do? So he kind of reminded me what I needed to do. I'd like to put something on the agenda to discuss about the role that the city used to play in the past, which is, we used to make a certain amount of contribution to Red Cross. And what has happened over the years, they do provide very crucial services to our fire during a major fire, and they do spend money from their own pockets, which they're not reimbursed for. But in the past, they kind of counted on our contribution because we used to give them money, but we kind of have eliminated some of those programs. We don't give them money anymore. And so I think we should discuss that issue because our fire department uses that, and they do spend money from their own pocket. So if you could put that on the agenda so we could discuss that, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Yusefian, I think that came out of the community request program that we eliminated about four, five years ago. Just question if we start opening up Pandora's Box.
Well, we don't need to create that, but I think maybe something needs to be worked out in the fire department section, so.
Be a lot of, a lot of organizations that'll be in here and say, what about us? So.
Mr. Najarian? I'd just like to add to Mr. Farina's remarks that I just learned that the, our local chapter of the American Red Cross relies almost exclusively on funds collected within our community. I thought there was some rich uncle American Red Cross up there that has a budget and passes money on to the local chapters, and that's, that's completely wrong. So it's very important for our community and everyone out there who values the services of the Red Cross and who doesn't value their services when disaster strikes, to support them in their fundraising efforts. It's really a worthy cause, and we've got to support it from our grassroots level because if not, they can just fold and go away, and we may be miles and miles away from the nearest Red Cross chapter, so.
Others have.
Like others have. And the Burbank chapter was one that has folded up. So we need to, I know we're saying support the Patrons Club and support Ser Optimists and support the Red Cross, but these are all very critical service providers within our community. So I encourage everyone to make a little room in their budgets for, for these type of activities and donations.
Right. Thank you. Okay, that's the last card on our communication. Now, we're going to seven, adoption of ordinances. Mr. Garcia, at what point now do we call the special meeting?
Mr. Mayor, given that 7A is the next item on the agenda, would be appropriate to call the special meeting to order and run it concurrently with the regular meeting.
Should we read 7A into the record first?
Yes. You can either or. Yeah, I would read, I would read 7A into the record and then call the special meeting.
Please read 7A in the record.
Seven is adoption of ordinances, and that 7A is continued from 9/26/06 regarding ordinance adding sections 9.2, 0.175, and 9.32 to Title IX of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995, and amending the sections as listed of the Glendale Municipal, of Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995, and adding section 30.34.155 of Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995, and amending sections as listed of the South Brand Boulevard specific plan relating to outdoor grilling. All of this offered from 9/1906 by Councilmember Yusefian.
Okay, now, do we call to order the special meeting and take a roll call?
Yes, just for the record.
Is that for this one?
Yeah. I should just state for the record, I guess, the negative declaration was prepared for the grilling ordinance and was actually included in your packet for the regular meeting agenda, but the resolution adopting the neg deck was not included as part of the agenda so that we could consider it as part of this item. A special meeting agenda item was prepared to include that, and that's why this is being done.
So call to order the special meeting of the city council.
It's a strange way of naming it.
7:10 PM, we will call for city council.
Councilmembers Menuchyan, Najarian, Quintero, Yusefian, Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Please read item...
I, or here.
Excuse me?
You said I.
Oh, here.
Here. I. I as in the first person.
I, I'm here. That way. Okay, would you read your...
I'll read my report first with the agenda for the October 17th.
We need a little humor today.
Special meeting was posted on Monday, October 16. You guys had a huge duck walk in here, anyway. The agenda for the October 17th, 2006, special meeting was posted on Monday, October 16, 2006, on the Bolton Board outside City Hall.
I feel the concrete weights on my legs.
And the item on this special meeting agenda is director of planning regarding negative declaration in conjunction with a proposed ordinance amending Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code and the South Brand Boulevard specific plan relating to outdoor grilling, item 7A on regular meeting agenda, 2A resolution adopting the negative declaration.
So at the proper time, we will be adopting 7A possibly in the regular meeting, and item...
2A.
2A in the special meeting. And we'll do the special meeting first because you want the neg deck first.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Dave, I have a question. So 7A, 7A is a grilling ordinance, and then 7B is just the South Brand specific plan. Right. 7A is just, is the grilling ordinance, 7B is the South Brand specific plan.
Actually, the 7B, we often call it the South Brand Plan. It's actually the land uses changes to the zoning code. It just happens because those land uses are referred to in the South Brand Plan, it's these, like, four lines of amendments to Title 30 and the South Brand Plan.
But the two are not...
But it's entirely separate.
Entirely separate.
And we'll handle the grilling first, and as the...
So 7B doesn't have anything to do with grilling, then?
No, nothing at all. It's all land uses, the second one. We'll do that right after we finish grilling.
Sir? Mr. Yusefian?
And the 7B has... And the 7B has its own neg-deck? Or is this neg-deck covered the 7Bs?
Neg-deck for 7B was approved last week.
Okay, so that was done. Okay, well, I wasn't here during the study session. Okay.
Now, go to Mr. McCall.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, one point, the chief assistant city attorney can confirm this, but on the adoption of consideration 7A and B, that will require a four-fifths vote.
That's correct.
On A and B?
On A and B.
A and B, so that would be a four-fifths of a vote. And then Elaine Wilker, Senator Planning Director, would be helpful if she could perhaps provide a couple comments on overview of the sequence of events that needs to take place now.
And explain what the neg-deck is exactly.
Well, I should also indicate what you received this evening. There's memorandum dated October 17th, which is a letter we received today, October 17th, from Myrna Stanley on behalf of the Verduka Woodlands West Homeowners Association, and Tim Foy's memo is addressing her questions in relation to the negative declaration. And she, the gist of her concerns was the cumulative effects, and that memorandum explains how we've addressed those cumulative effects in the neg-deck and how we're using the AQMD air quality thresholds and the AQMD process as our means of addressing the cumulative effects. And there was also a question about the appropriateness of the timing of this neg-deck because she said that she thought it was inappropriate, having had it introduced last week. She uses the term first reading. Some jurisdictions have the introduction called first reading and then the adoption is called second reading. I was familiar with that, so I wasn't surprised. But in fact, when we introduce an ordinance, when one of the members of council does, that is not an approval of any sort. SEQA requires that the negative declaration or environmental document be addressed by council first before making a decision, an approval or denial or whatever. In the case of an introduction of an ordinance, that is not considered a decision of approval or denial. And so, it's quite appropriate for you to have this negative declaration before you today, but as the mayor indicated, it's most important that you address that first. Negative declaration was introduced as a result of input we received in the process. We had previously determined that the proposed grilling ordinance was exempt, and as a matter of fact, Section 23 of the ordinance before you still has a clause that says it's exempt, and the city attorney is going to suggest some varied language because when we had the input about cumulative effects and so on, we felt it was most appropriate to do a negative declaration under SEQA. And that was given 10 days notice in the newspaper prior to today's meeting. Today was the close of comments, and that's why we had this comment today, and we were required to respond to that as part of the SEQA process, and we have done that. I've left extra copies of that at the rear of the chambers for anyone else who is interested in that response. And we will ensure that Ms. Stanley gets a copy of that, we'll email her, because we've received many things from her by email, we'll respond by email. The other thing you have before you are two pieces of correspondence, one from Mr. Fulmer, Majority Leader of the Legislature, and.
No longer.
Former.
No.
Majority Leader. Anyways, and Mr., oh, Miss, excuse me, Miss Alice Thorland as well. There have also been a number of pieces of the newspaper, which I would suggest you have expressed concerns about the ordinance, and although they are not in the public record, I think the council members, of course, are aware of those pieces of correspondence, that they are not in the public record because they were not submitted to us, they were submitted to the newspaper. Now, on the matter before you tonight, the outdoor grilling ordinance, it is as requested by council, and it was continued.
On the neg-deck first.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
On the neg-deck, it's simply saying that this council has been made aware of all the potential negative impacts on outdoor grilling. It's an acknowledgement that we're aware, is that correct?
It's an approval of a document saying that environmental impacts were analyzed and it was determined that there are going to be no significant impacts from the ordinance.
And we've been made aware of that fact, it doesn't mean we're either for or against outdoor grilling point, we've just been informed of the impacts that may or may not exist.
That's correct.
And the negative declaration does not require four votes, it requires three votes, and that is in no way, as you say, Mr. Mayor, an indication of agreeing or disagreeing with the proposed ordinance. As I was saying, the ordinance as proposed was continued at the last meeting, two weeks ago, I believe, 26th of September, and it was continued from that date, that was a week following the introduction of the ordinance. There have been a couple of changes made to it that were outlined by Mr. Foy as well in a memo to you that was circulated as part of the agenda packet, and the matters that he identified were attached in a few pages of the ordinance, then the entire ordinance follows as a strikeout version so that you have it as well. I had a question today on the question of special events that council had raised. The way staff addressed that was to indicate that outdoor grilling on any site could occur up to four times a year without having a requirement for a conditional use permit, and that has no relationship to who does the grilling, it's where the grilling occurs because zoning is related to the site, not to the griller, grillor. I'm not sure what the correct term and that terminology is, but anyways, so I'm hoping that resolves that question that was raised to me.
And that's regardless of the size?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know if the guys down below have that picture, I told them to put it on the monitor, I don't know if it's there. Okay, there we are at the Relay for Life, and you could see Mr. Starbird in the back, and there is me with the hat, and there is a tape measure. We measured the Kiwanis Grill, the Kiwanis Grill is about 20 square feet, so I just wanted to make sure, we kind of told them that they're in violation with this ordinance.
That was a nice joke.
Right, well, they told us, they were not happy with that because they said, if you pass a law that keeps us from doing this, you better find a way to come up with $60,000 because they do this, every year they raise $60,000, literally, doing this for charitable organizations. So, I want to make sure whatever we adopt doesn't get them into trouble.
The new code would not interfere with that as long as it's no more than four times on a site. The present code says no outdoor grilling is permitted anywhere in the city.
Okay. So, they were in violation there.
I'm not going to speak.
But they did feed about 800 people that day.
Okay. Well, we haven't heard of the staff report.
Okay, let's hear the staff report.
Would you like Tim to?
Who's going to do it, Mr. McCall?
Oh, we do the neg-deck first, right? Or is there a staff report on neg-deck?
It's necessary to have, Tim, he also distributed a four-slide presentation, just summarizing what the ordinance does. He could do that for you if you'd like, otherwise.
I think we'd better do everything because we do have three speakers, and I don't know if they want to speak on the neg-deck or on the grilling, so the only way to cover is do the whole thing and then open it up for the public.
Principal Planner Timothy Foy will now do a very brief introduction of what the ordinance has in it.
Thank you, Mr. Ferina. Want some water?
Yeah, please. Thank you.
King Patrina.
Thank you, this, let me breathe, again, there is no new information here, it's just a summary of the ordinance. There are fire safety regulations in this ordinance, it would be in Title IX of the municipal code. These are basically just common sense things, like you have to be 10 feet from a flammable wall and things like that. There's, the zoning code, conditional use permit would be required only when you're over 10 square feet in area and less than 200 feet from residential and is used more than 400 times, excuse me, four times per year. Otherwise, it's permitted, but there's not a conditional use permit required.
In the same location, four times a year in the same location.
That's right.
Okay. Maybe we need to add that.
Yeah, well, these, the rules and.
Because you know it today, somewhere down the line, somebody may not know, it's four times a year per location, they may say four times a year per operator, and then Kiwanis will get in trouble.
And these are the standards that would apply to all grills over 10 square feet, whether they need a CUP or not, these standards would apply. Fixed to the ground and screened with a wall that is screened only from residential or public right-of-way, that it's on durable, washable, non-absorbent flooring, they have to have some plan for making sure they're not putting waste on into the stormwater system, and they must show proof of AQMD registration.
How about the health permit?
Mr. Yusefian.
All restaurants have to have county health permits.
What if they're not a restaurant?
Or not.
Yeah, but what if you're not a restaurant?
Well, all food service establishments.
So, any food establishment needs to have a health permit, so you didn't want to put it in because it's redundant?
Right.
Okay.
Right. And also, hours of operation from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. If you're far from a residential zone, by right, it could be extended to 11:00 PM on the weekend. Otherwise, if someone wants an extension of hours, or if, yeah, then it would be reviewed by the zoning administrator through a conditional use permit. And that about sums it up, there would be, none of these standards would apply to grills of 10 square feet or less.
Mr. Manukian.
There's some special events that have, like the Montrose Farmers Market, they have the Hawaiian chicken that they cook every Sunday out there.
They're actually doing it on the street, on public property?
So, the zoning doesn't apply?
So, the zoning doesn't apply?
The zoning doesn't apply, I believe.
I just want to make sure that, I mean.
There's a provision that we're proposing, 90, 20, 175, outdoor grilling on public property, which could affect it, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that was.
Let's not, let's not create something.
Page one of 7A.
For them where they would, if we impose a CUP on them, they're going to go away and they're not, my assumption is that they're going to go away and not really apply for the CUP.
Where is that item?
Well, I just, I'm looking at page one of 7A of the ordinance, which is, I think, the clean copy. And it refers to 90.20, which I believe is a typo, it should be 9.20.175. Is hereby added to the municipal code as follows, any outdoor grilling, heating, or smoking of food which occurs more than four times per year on public property in conjunction with activity whether commercial in nature or not shall be prohibited unless the activity has received a permit or otherwise authorization from a city official authorized to grant such permit or authorization. I'm assuming grilling in a street would require the authorization of public works.
The Montrose Farmers Market has a special event permit, it's a special event permit.
And I'm assuming that's from the public works director.
That's the purpose for drafting it that way, so that they get the special events permit, they could have the activity.
Okay.
So, they would have to get their permit from public works because it's in the public right-of-way?
No, the overall market gets a special event permit.
Yeah, they get it through the city clerk, but the city clerk sends.
I don't know if it's through the city clerk or the county, which one is?
City clerk sends all this stuff to different departments.
The city clerk?
Yeah.
It's a special event permit.
And we drafted it that way because I think there was a concern that maybe some other private facilities were having grilling activities right in front of their facility, and there was a concern about that. I think Mr. Najarian raised it the last time about maybe just private entities doing it on their own.
We didn't want them to get around the rule by saying, I'm doing it on the sidewalk.
But to have a process where you have special event permit for right-of-way for those events that traditionally have these types of.
Is, well, let's get clear on the definition, is a special event as defined in the course of obtaining a special event permit the same special event as you're contemplating in this ordinance? I think they might be different things. You can have a special event every week, twice a week at the Montrose Fair and the Market on Market, and have a griller there, and that's not necessarily a special event in the eyes of the planning department.
In.
I mean, I just want to make sure we're clear on that because there may be terms of art in each department which may not be exactly synonymous.
Well, in the proposed ordinance, we do not use the term special event, and we do that for a reason because by defining it, we are going to create problems with other terminology of events and event permits and so on. We felt that the use of a grilling, piece of grilling equipment in a location, more than four times in that location, that site, would, on private property, would necessitate the process of the CUP or just the regulations. But in the public property, I had the impression that the city wanted to continue to allow the normal special event process to be in place, and if someone was getting a permit to do their special event with grilling, that would be sufficient. So, it's been written that way, that we differ, and we always differentiate between public property and private property and zoning. The zoning only applies to private property. So, the city has jurisdiction to allow what it wishes on its public property.
So, the zoning requirement will be the four times a year, and the public property will be, get a special permit. That's the way, and that's the way it's drafted.
Once it's more than four times a year.
Right.
With the theory that the city could regulate it every time they give the special event permit in terms of specifying exactly what needs to be done.
And we could monitor it and add any additional regulations we wish. Of course, in these special events, we tend not to have the same kinds of ability to put in drains and fix things, because if it's on the street, we can't do that. So, we would have to do alternative arrangements, and that particular market at Montrose, for example.
We've never had problems with them.
It moves, it actually moves, it's not always in the same place in the street, it's, I know of it being in many places myself in the last five years.
And in those instances also, we have, we require they comply with the requirements of the health department, the county health department.
Well, they have to.
They have to do that.
Mr. Garcia.
If I may, for the events that are in the public right-of-way, there is also a requirement within the draft here now that the outdoor grilling that's in a right-of-way or a public area comply with Section 30.34.115 of the code, which is the, which are the requirements for.
What requirements?
Basically, the requirements we're putting on outdoor grilling for the private entities as well, so if, you know, make sure that either, if you, that the grease is prevented from.
10 to 9?
Uh, yes.
Yes, although it does say the zoning administrator could extend those hours.
That's correct.
Although we probably should add to the ordinance that we would exempt them from needing to be screened from public view or fixed to the ground.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah, or having them have drainage system and something of that nature because, you know.
They might have to be there at 9:00 to start going.
I don't want to go out there digging out the street trying to put a drainage system.
And I'm sure the public works director doesn't want you doing that either.
We provided that the city could administratively approve different hours.
Drill the legs into the ground.
And lastly, that requirement wouldn't apply if the grill was less than 10 square feet in surface area.
What happens in the parks, is that a public?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? We do have cards.
I have one question, and we'll get on with this, sorry, Mr. Mayor. When you talk about same location, now, do we have to nail down what same location means? Same location such as the parking?
City of Glendale.
I mean, when you're talking about parking, we requiring that you move your vehicle to a space 200 feet outside of the original spot or whatever our particular requirement is?
In the context of private property, I believe it'd be anywhere on the lot, the parcel, because the permissions are by lot or parcel, and that's why I answered the question that Mr. Yusefian had asked me earlier.
But is that in the, I appreciate that interpretation.
This is four times per year, and if you're concerned, it wouldn't be unreasonable to add on the lot, on that.
I think we should clarify.
On the same parcel, I think that's very important to put that in.
Well, it's going to be only a private property anyways.
Right.
This only applies to private property, and we would, and so it wouldn't apply to.
I agree, because this way you don't have the problem guy saying, oh, well, last week was here, this week is like two inches over, and, you know.
Well, and I think if you should say more than four times per year on a lot.
On a private property.
On a lot.
Private property, lot.
And then maybe we should put excluding public property.
So, I don't want to be a nudge about this.
We won't have a problem excluding public property.
Just put down private property, that's it, you don't have to say the public anymore because what else is left?
The zoning code applies to private property, so you would just say on the same parcel or on the same lot.
Okay, but I have, I do have a question of the city attorney since he's saying that because I'm having second thoughts. In the SR zone, we zone in the SR and applies to. In the SR zone, we zone in the SR and applies to private people doing things on the SR zone, and I think even though it's public property, if a private individual's doing something on the SR zone, it applies to them, is that so?
Somebody's doing something on the public property?
Like if, if they're doing...
Yeah, because those properties are owned, SR.
Cellular tower on the SR public property, they have to go through the CUP.
That's true.
So if you're doing grilling on a public property, that's a private individual, not a public agency, so maybe we should, to be safe, say on private property, or the reverse, excluding public property?
Yes.
Which would you prefer?
On private, on private property.
Okay. On a lot, on a private, privately owned lot.
Yes.
Okay, one last thing to drive you crazy. When you say in a year, do you mean in a calendar year or in a 12-month period?
That's a good question, actually. I think you should probably define it and put it in there.
I think we should have a 12-month period, because you could have four barbecues on December 31st, or in that week, and then four more the week after, and the neighborhood could be smoked out.
Okay, so you're saying in any 12-month period it's...
In any 12-month period, I think would be more appropriate.
For 12-month period.
Thanks, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
So so far, just as summary...
To have an attorney and counsel.
We have now changed the, all the sections that say outdoor grilling occurring more than four times in the land use list, that's for commercial, industrial, and mixed use, to say outdoor grilling occurring more than four times per, per 12-month period on a privately owned lot. And that would occur in all places, and I'm also reminding you that we'll be changing that section 23 later. We won't forget that, will we? And we're going to just keep track of any changes we discuss tonight, so that we'll, at the end, if we're voting, we'll make sure we introduce all these very specifically because the ordinance has to be specific.
I will read it for the public.
Now, Tim, did you finish your presentation? I, I, thank you.
Yeah, a long time ago. Okay, Mr. Yasefian.
Tim, do you have anything that you need to present to us as far as the neck deck is concerned? Nothing out there?
I have a neck deck question.
He's got a neck deck question.
If, if the mayor so chooses to go in that direction, or do you want to just go through this?
Go ahead, I, I'm ready for the public.
So, Tim, let's be clear about this, because it's a little confusing about a neck deck, and I want to make sure everyone understands it. It was confusing to me for the first few times I went through one of these. This is a report by you. Are you the author or the preparer of this?
Yes, standard forms.
Okay, it's a standard form, and you go through different, different sections and categories, such as aesthetics, agricultural resources, cultural resources, and you determine whether there is an impact, whether there's no impact, less than significant impact, less than significant with a mitigated incorporation, and a potentially significant impact.
Without.
Without. And I think the critical thing that we've heard about, both from the speakers and in the newspaper and before our letters, I think is, is on category G, the hazards and hazardous material with regard to the smoke. Is that where that would be addressed?
Actually, I would refer to C, the air quality section.
C, air quality.
Page four and five.
Page four and five, because this is what we're hearing, and...
And that's the section that indicates the project site, which is the city.
Right.
Is the city, and it's part of the South Coast Air Basin, and is under the jurisdiction of the South Coast Air Quality Management District, the, and we use the SCA QMDs, Current Guidelines and Emission Thresholds Established in Sequo Air Quality Analysis Guidance Handbook, updated October 2003, and that these are used as, as the basis for the assessment of the air quality impacts of development projects, and that we regularly, as a city, rely on these standards as the standard for the city.
Okay.
Because we don't feel qualified to do ourselves, we allow them to do it, and we've assumed that in other things, and we are assuming it again here.
So it's their, they set the standards, and we're determining whether the impact on this, of this ordinance would deviate from those standards?
Yes, because...
Or have an impact, no impact, mitigated, and all that other stuff?
And we determined that's less than significant impact because we relied on...
Okay, okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. So there's five questions in that category. Let's just go through it, because these are the burning questions, no pun intended. So number one is, would this ordinance conflict with or obstruct implementation of the applicable air quality plan? And your answer was?
The applicable air quality plan is that which is adopted by the South Coast Air Quality Management District, and it would not conflict with their plan, because they, they allow outdoor grilling and have chosen in the past actually to not put emissions controls on such operations.
The next one is, would it violate any air quality standard or contribute substantially to an existing or projected air quality violation? I think this is a pretty important one that, that we're concerned with. And your answer was?
And the answer is no, because these sites will be scattered, they won't occur all at once, and even at these scattered sites, the grilling activity will be very sporadic. And even then, depending on which way the wind's blowing, different people will be affected, so in any one, any one receptor site, it's going to have only very, very sporadic exposure.
Okay. The next one is, would it result in a cumulatively considerable net increase of any criteria pollutant for which the project region is non-attainment under an applicable federal or state ambient air quality standard, including releasing emissions which exceed quantitative thresholds for ozone precursors? So are we under a non-attainment region currently?
We are for some, for some issues, for some kinds of matters, but not, for some types of pollutants, but not for others. For example, carbon monoxide, there's only one region in the whole United States which is in a non-attainment area, and it's not Los Angeles. There are other kinds of pollutants.
Your answer was then, as you're saying, it's a less than significant impact?
Yes.
And I would add, Mr. Najarian, that the, because the, the requirement will be that every operator registered with AQMD, it also requires that they comply with all AQMD rules, which are intended to protect air quality, such as if there's a visible emission problem becomes problematic in the eyes of AQMD, they have the right to regulate it and require additional mitigation measures if, if the case requires.
Okay. The next one is, would it expose sensitive receptors to substantial pollutant concentrations? And your answer was?
I mean, it's kind of the same answer as given before, because these are, are going to be scattered, the grilling activity will be sporadic, and even then, the smoke will go in variable directions.
Is a sensitive receptor a sensitive nose, or is it...
Residential use could be.
Three eyes, sensitive eyes?
No, residential use, you know, maybe a school.
And we require that within 200 feet of a residential zone, there be a conditional use permit process, and that process itself would enable us to determine if there are any impacts and mitigate them through the conditions of approval, if it were to be approved.
Now, here's one we hear a lot about, would it create objectionable odors affecting a substantial number of people? And you said, "Less than significant."
Less than significant, again, just because of sporadic nature of the activity.
Are you assuming that, that there will be no increase? I mean, how are you, how do you know that next week, once this ordinance is passed, we're not going to have just a, a sudden surge in under 10-foot grilling that would, that would somehow affect all these categories? Are you, do you have, how, how do you, you know, you said it's scattered effect. How can we assume, and are you allowed to assume, that it will be scattered and it would not increase and grow in number of sources?
Yes, you are allowed to assume that, because under Sequo, you do not have to study the worst case imaginable. What you have to study is the worst case that can be realistically expected, and there are just only so many restaurants, there's going to be only so much demand for these kinds of foods that are prepared that way, and there's just really no reason that we have to believe that there's going to be a sudden explosion in demand. Mr. Garcia.
And I would just add, Mr. Najarian, the city's allowed under Sequo to, I think, look at historical patterns of the use in determining what's reasonably foreseeable as far as the, the impact.
And, Tim, you have some experience in doing this work. This wasn't your first EIR.
No, it wasn't, certainly not.
And this then went to Elaine Wilkerson.
And I, in that last question, I'd like to read his last two statements, because they're kind of important in, in dealing with this. It says, "Therefore, while some odors will be created by the activity, it is not anticipated that a substantial number of people will be affected on any more than a sporadic basis. Therefore, no significant impacts would occur." We're not saying no impacts would occur.
Significant.
We're saying significant, and in the context of Sequo, this is an environmental impact piece of legislation, and significant impacts are a good step above no impacts. And I would say that when it came to me, I had to read this, and I had to determine under Sequo if there was a significant impact, and I had to agree with Tim that there were no significant impacts. There, I would not state there are no impacts, and I appreciate some of the correspondence and the comments we've had. That is a matter of policy of council, it's not a matter of Sequo.
Let me ask again. Are we simply acknowledging this report, or are we saying whether we disagree, agree or disagree with this report?
You're certifying that this environmental analysis is sufficient.
That you've done this to the best of your knowledge. And if we disagree with the contents therein, it's not an acknowledgement now, it's saying we disagree.
No, yeah, if you, if you go, in order to adopt the negative declaration, you have to believe there's no substantial evidence in the record showing that there will be significant environmental impacts caused by the adoption of the ordinance.
So if we disagree with the contents therein, the findings, we should vote no.
That's correct.
Correct. But if you vote to certify the negative declaration, that in itself does not mean you will vote in favor of the ordinance. It may mean that you think under Sequo, which is a state process, that it is adequate.
Those are minimum standards.
As, as a review, you think this is sufficient for Sequo purposes. That does not mean that you think there's no impact or on a policy basis that you agree with the ordinance.
But if we thought something was significant as opposed to insignificant, then we should vote no.
And, as I said, the category, the category is, is it significant impact under Sequo? And...
Well, we don't, we're not the writers of Sequo. All we can do is look at the forms you fill out, your subjective opinion of that, which may be different than a lot of people in the community, so if we don't personally agree with your finding, then I think I'm hearing that we should vote no.
That's correct, and we will take no offense, I assure you.
Sure you will.
No, I, I won't, and, and Tim won't either. We, we do these reviews regularly, and we do them on the basis of Sequo, and it's a, it's a documentation process which is limited in scope, and it, it is a personal subjective decision.
Now you're ready to hear from the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Didn't mean to put you on the spot, but...
No, no, that's good points. Okay, first speaker, Barry Allen, two minutes. Followed by Vraj Sarkisian.
Mr. Mayor, before I start, is that two minutes for the negative declaration and for 7A?
Yes.
So four minutes total.
No, 7A and B, two minutes.
So a minute apiece.
7A and 2A.
However you want to use the two minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff. I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard. As the council prepares to pass the outdoor grilling ordinance and the negative, certify the negative declaration, attempting to make legal that which has not been to benefit six banquet halls, one restaurant, and Whole Foods, according to the staff report, they're missing several opportunities to clean up the environment. At best, the council is inconsistent. They promoted anti-smoking in parks and public places, and they promote the Relay for Life for Cancer Awareness, and with this ordinance promote no carcinogens. As a matter of fact, you gave a proclamation to sore optimists for the same purpose. There's been no environmental, now we have the environmental impact report that would have been known that wood smoke is worse than cigarette smoke. In fact, a recent business, visit to a pulmonologist indicated there's a higher number of respiratory illnesses caused by the day fire, the wood smoke. Here's some stats. Every pound of wood burned costs $2 in health expenses. Wood smoke stays active, chemically active in the body 40 times longer than the tobacco smoke. One hour of exposure can reduce immune defenses 25 to 40 percent. Secondhand wood smoke has a similar composition to coke oven emissions and causes a variety of diseases ranging from heart disease, stroke, lung, bladder, and breast cancer. Remember that while you're gasping for breath when you did the Relay for Life. It doesn't have to be that way, there's a solution that can make everyone happy. The city can set up a loan system so that the eight non-compliant establishments can borrow the money, paying it back with interest, to move the grills indoors and install the appropriate air cleaning and scrubber systems. And Mr. Menoukian can order kebab takeout from his favorite restaurant and give his family its lungs a rest. And, Mr. Najarian, good probative questions, and the word is nudge. Not nudge.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, I'm Barry Allen, here's the...
Vraj Sarkisian.
...for the stats came from.
Followed by Margaret Hammond.
Must be Yiddish.
Well, good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Vraj Sarkisian, and as you all know, I'm the president of the Restaurant and Banquet Owners Association, which is based locally here in this great city of ours. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank a few people. First and foremost, I'd like to thank council. I think council has recognized the need for this ordinance. I think the ordinance truly reflects the desires of a vast majority of our community. The gentleman before me spoke about health concerns. We all know, gentlemen, grilled food is the healthiest for us. I'd also like to thank staff, I think they've worked very diligently on this ordinance. I'd like to officially say that the Restaurant and Banquet Owners Association is in support of this ordinance in its entirety, and on behalf of our members, I'd like to thank everybody, excuse me, on behalf of our members, I'd like to thank everybody who's been involved in this process for all their hard work, for all the hours they put into it. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you. Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. The impact, there has to have been an impact, because why was the ordinance put on the books in the first place? Was it to control the smell of smoke and a health problem? Must have had been some reason for it to be put on the books in the first place. It said "commercial grilling." It said that right there in the ordinance. And yet, here we are, cars must meet smog restrictions. We don't see the smoke coming from the cars, and we don't necessarily smell the odor or the fumes, but it costs millions, to the taxpayers pay millions to have to get their cars smogged every couple of years, and what it costs if it doesn't pass, another millions and millions of dollars. And then on top of that, the incinerators were banned. Why were they banned? Because of the smoke and the smell and the hazard to health. It's, it's amazing that, you know, all these rules were put on the books to protect the public, and here we're taking it off the books and putting on something that could be a hazard. If you live next door to these facilities with these barbecues, you will be very unhappy about this whole thing, feeling that your city council has abandoned you and left you to fend for yourself. They should be made to put these grills inside, like many do. Many small markets and restaurants have inside grilling. Now, you know, it's unbelievable, here you're going to pass another rule, another ordinance allowing this, and yet possibly over 10 years, Neighborhood Services has a file, had a file six inches thick. Read the illegal grilling over all those years. And then, when they were ready to go forward with insisting that something be done about it, they were told to forget it, they were going to legalize the illegal actions. So, and the other thing I'd like to ask, are they allowed to grill in the laneways? The public laneways?
You mean alleys?
In the alleys, laneway, okay, alleys. I'd like to know that, because I, I went, I went in a laneway between Louise Street, I'm not just sure whether it's the MGM, and there was a grill out in the laneway, in the alleyway.
Currently, if you wanted to conduct a grilling activity, you could do it in conjunction with a special event, if that's the only way it would currently be allowed.
So no, without a permit, Margaret? No.
Okay. No more cards. Let's have discussion before we take these two. Have you got any comments?
Have you got any comments? If not, I'll make my comments, and we can take the vote. I've wrestled with this a good deal. It's not been an easy decision to make, but I'll be voting against this ordinance and the neck deck. You know, many, many, many years ago, we set laws that said, "commercial barbecuing is done inside," and there had to have been good reasons for that. And moving backward, I think, is the wrong way to go. It's a philosophical decision on my part. No hard feeling that banquet halls, I've been in some of them, eaten there, ones that barbecue inside, ones that barbecue outside. It's just philosophically, I think, commercial barbecuing should be inside. Otherwise, it's going to be more than just banquet halls that'll be doing it eventually. Mike and Bob's big boy doing it out in the parking lot, the others. So philosophically, I'm opposed to it, and I just wanted to state that publicly before we vote. There's no other, Mr. Quintero.
Okay, well, I'm going to vote against the EIR, because I think there is a, or there would be, a significant impact, or one of the terms in the EIR was a potential significant impact. I think that that is absolutely the case currently, and it would only get worse. And this applies to everyone. We keep focusing on banquet halls, but it applies to everyone, including Whole Foods, which I don't understand how Whole Foods can be grilling meats outside. I mean, they redid that entire facility, and they should have called for a inside grill if they wanted to do that. Then on the overall ordinance, I'm going to vote against it. I think we need to finish dealing with the banquet hall issues altogether in one ordinance. And I don't, I don't remember, to tell you the truth, how this grilling, you know, was sort of separated from the overall banquet hall ordinance. But I think we need to, once and for all, make decisions on banquet halls and their operations and everything else that we've worked on throughout the years. So I'd like to see us come to a conclusion on that, for the owners of the banquet halls as well as for residents.
And Mr. Quintero, I think I'm the one that said to pull this item out, because it was the most sensitive of the issues, was the outdoor grilling aspect. So handle that separately, then roll into the entire one, which will concern fire sprinkling and a number of other things. So I think I was the one who looked back, a memory, but I think I was. Any other comments, or is there motion? That's Mr. Yusefian.
I hope some of my colleagues saw the notice of decision from AQMD that was as part of the packets, if they had gone deep enough into there. If you have read that, you would say, "Project location, South Coast Air Quality Management District, the four counties, South Coast area basin, Orange County, and the non-desert portions of Los Angeles, Riverside, and San Bernardino County, and the Riverside County, portions of the Salton Sea air basin, and the Mojave Desert air basin. Project description, the SQM, Southern California Air Quality Management District, is proposing to continue the exemption from the capacity standards rule 401B2 that applies to commercial char broilers for an additional four years. The potential environmental impact from the original exemptions were analyzed in a previously prepared EA, environmental document, which, that's their way of saying it, which concluded that the PM10 emissions reductions may be foregone. The foregone PM10 emission reductions, however, were determined to be less than significant. Oh, sorry, it's less than, Southern California Air Quality Management District's daily PM10 significance threshold, and therefore, non-significant. Environmental impacts from the currently proposed project are essentially the same as those identified for the previous projects. As a result, pursuant to the SQMD guidelines 15153, the Southern California Air Quality Management relied on the SEQA documents from an earlier project as AQMD documents for the current project." So what basically they said is, "This is a rule that Southern California Air Quality Management has, and it's not just for us, it goes further, it goes to all those places that I read in here. Bottom line is, the amount of PMs that char broilers put out is less than significant." And that's all of them, in the whole of these counties. And the answer that one of my colleagues asked about, "How much would this put out?" There's over 73,000 or 76,000 dwelling units in Glendale. Almost half have barbecues.
More than half.
Let's give it half. If you want to figure this out, worst-case scenario, can you imagine if 34,000 people get out there at the same time and turn their barbecues on, what it will be? Or what is the chance of having that? I have a barbecue, do you know how many times I've grilled this year? Three. I don't know how many times you guys have barbecued, but, and that's what this is all about. That's why Mr. Foye found that there is no significant impact.
Okay, is there any other comments, or is there a motion?
I will take a fifth on that question, how many times you have barbecued.
Well, good. I hope you barbecue more, because probably that's why you're healthier than I am. I eat more fried foods.
Is there a motion on 7A?
Move 7A.
Is there a second on 7A?
We have to do the next. No, it's 2A on the special agenda, we have to go first.
Oh, yeah, it's 2, I'm sorry.
2A.
2A.
I was following after you, you said.
Sorry.
2A.
2A. Looking at the wrong agenda. 2A, moved and seconded?
Yes.
The neck deck. Okay, no discussion, rule call.
Council members, Menucha? Yes. Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
No.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Weaver?
No. Okay, now we're to 7A.
Does that pass, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, only needed three votes, right?
The neck deck passes, yes.
Okay.
Just want to put it on the record.
Okay, now 7A. Mr. Najarian?
Would you like, I didn't comment on 7A. Perhaps, I think several others have made their positions clear. We got to this point, Mr. Mayor, because we heard from the public, from many speakers, Margaret, Juan, the Taylors, to name a few more, talking about the obnoxious, noxious fumes that they were seeing and smelling and experiencing in and around the banquet halls that were barbecuing outside. We took it upon ourselves to try and do something, because I don't think any one of us on the council was happy by hearing this type of comments from our residents. So we, there was a proposal for the 10-foot, 10-square-foot surface area grill, the 200-feet distance from the residential zones. And it was our attempt, I think, the purpose was to see if this type of regulation is going to solve the problem of the smoke, the smells, the fumes, et cetera. I personally want to see if this regulation, if this modification of our current, actually, it's a relaxation of our current standard, which is no grilling at all, is going to have an effect, and if it is going to improve some of the conditions and nuisances that we have heard of from our residents. In my, in my mind, this is not a closed deal. We, we almost arbitrarily came up with our 10-square-foot surface area and our 200-square, 200-foot distance from a residential zone. There wasn't a lot of scientific thought into it. We sort of, you know, put our hands out and, you know, imagined how much smoke would come from a grill this size, and how far away from a house it would be, and where the smoke would travel into. For me, I'm ready to vote for this, but more or less on a trial period, because I would like to know personally whether these regulations are going to solve the bulk of the problems that we heard of from our residents. I don't know. We, it could, there could be no problems were this to be implemented, or the problems could just continue unabated as we had heard from before. But I think we should give it a chance and revisit this after a certain period of time, depending on the responsiveness of the neighbors and the residents of Glendale. I'm more than happy to tighten it up, should this not be sufficient to tighten it up in terms of, there's many different ways we can do it, in terms of the type of, type of material that's going to be burned, whether it can be wood or gas, further limiting the size of the grill, perhaps requiring it to be covered or have some sort of additional screening. But I don't see this as a final determination. We are making assumptions, all of us, from planning to legal to us up here, as to whether these definitions and these restrictions that we made are going to solve the problem. I, for one, am willing to see if they will reduce the impact on our neighborhoods, and for that reason, I'd be willing to vote for it now, and more than willing to open it up again, to make further fine-tuning adjustments to it, to see if any further adjustments could be made, should our complaints continue from the residents about the smoke.
Your suggestion, though, would make a modification to the ordinance, right? If you're putting a timeframe on to revisit.
Yeah. And, Mr. Mayor, that's the question I was going to ask. Can you pass an ordinance with a sunset clause?
You can. You can also just adopt it and then revisit it later, make amendments to it later.
Yeah, but if you put a sunset clause in it, then you know you have to come back.
Or can we direct staff to bring it back?
You can't do that as well. Keep in mind that if you permit the activity.
That's what I'm saying. We'll have a million things to do, we'll forget, but if you have a sunset clause, it automatically brings it.
Sunset clause is staff-directed. To the extent you permit the activity and people, owners and operators, put out dollars to comply with the ordinance, whether it's be fixing their grill to the ground, that sort of thing, that could be the basis to have, to continue a legal non-conforming right, even if the council changes its mind later on and imposes new regulations or stricter regulations. So that's, that is one.
Really good challenge, if we further restrict the standards.
Correct. Typically, operational issues, like perhaps hours and those types of things, those can be imposed on an existing operator, but things where maybe you require more screening than you originally allowed, that might be subject to a non-conforming challenge in the future.
I mean, Southern California, I mean, they do this all the time. They come up with PM rules, they come and nail us all the time. When, when our power plant goes a little bit over and ammonia, they come and say, "Sorry, you gotta change it, but it's going to cost us $10 million," and that was the rule in the past. Well, too bad, this is the rule today, you know?
And I would add, I think Mr. Najarian made a good comment, with respect to the cost of fixing grills and those sorts of things, there is the ability of the council to put hammerization for any future non-conforming grills or operations, and it shouldn't be that costly, given, given the amount of cost.
You got a 10-square-foot grill, what's the cost of that? 300 bucks?
198.
Oh, you have one.
There hasn't been a motion. There hasn't been a motion or.
Is there a motion on 7A?
Say, oh, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion with a modification. I'll make a motion with modification that 7A1 with the modification that we made earlier as far as the four times and on the prop.
To put it in the record.
7A, sorry, 7A.
Once it's seconded, I have to.
Now, Mr. Garcia is going to have something to say in a minute here.
Okay, and, and with the fact that this, this ordinance will last for 12 months, and after that, it will sunset.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Garcia.
You have something?
I just wanted to, we'll put those in there, because the ordinance has been, motions have been made to, to adopt it. Ms. Wilkerson and I will have to read into the record the changes that have been discussed and made as part of the ordinance, since this is the ordinance for adoption, we have to make sure that the exact wording is in the record now, at this point, not at some future date, so.
Okay. I apologize, this is going to be boring.
All ears.
But I'll do my best. I've tried to catch it all. If you turn to page one of your clean copy, which is 7A, the full ordinance, on page one, the reference in section one to section 90.20175 should be 9.20.175. On the first line, where it says "four times per year," the word "year" should be replaced by "any 12-month period." Page seven.
Sorry, can I, since we're on that section, can I, there was discussion of making the grills that are going to be on public property comply with the section 30.34.115, but I think some of the council members had concerns about some of those sections, so maybe I should just carve out the ones that the council would want to apply to those grills. Flipping to page 41 of the ordinance, 30.34.115 imposes the requirement that it be permanently fixed and screened, I believe Council Yusefian offered that that now be part of the requirement for grills that are on the right-of-way. With respect to.
Can you imagine trying to build a screen around Montrose in the middle of the street?
Understood, I just want to read those into the record. Subsection B of that section, that the grilling equipment be on a durable, non-porous, washable floor, again, same thing, we can't ensure that that's going to be the case. Subsection C deals with a drain, or provides that the fire chief and public works director can approve an alternate system of stormwater diversion. I'm not sure if the council.
I think the alternate should be in there.
Okay, so we'll, what I'll suggest is that from subsection C, we strike, as it applies to right-of-way, we strike the first two sentences, and then the third sentence would be, "The fire chief and public works director shall approve a system of stormwater diversion for the, for the use."
Right.
Then that would be the end of it. Subsection D requires that the outdoor grilling establishment register with AQMD.
Right.
You want that to apply, I take it as well, to the grills that are in the public property.
Right.
And subsection E deals with hours of operation.
Right.
Not sure where the council was on that. I think you wanted to apply, or you did not.
It's, I mean, it's, I haven't seen the Montrose event go till midnight, so it's generally, yeah, it's 1:00, 2:00 o'clock. That's fine, I think it's within that round.
Then what I would suggest in, in the section on page one, where it says, "Such outdoor grilling of food shall be subject to the standards in section 30.34.115 of this code." I think that sentence should be changed to, "Such outdoor grilling of food shall be subject to the following standards," and then we would repeat the standard specific in this spot, because it's only portion thereof.
Okay.
Then page seven. Yeah, it says that, doesn't it? Okay. Page seven, in the center of the page, it says, "The permitted uses," where it says "P," "Outdoor grilling occurs more than four times per year where the grilling surface." The first line will now read, "Outdoor grilling occurring more than four times per 12, any 12-month."
Period.
Period, "on privately owned lot, on a privately owned lot or," the word "or" is omitted, we're adding "or" in there, so I'll repeat that, because this is going to be repeated many, many times. "Outdoor grilling occurring more than four times per any four, excuse me, any 12-month period on a privately owned lot or." And now, what I'm going to do is... The next section, it says, "Outdoor grilling occurring more than four times per year." It would be more than four times per any 12-month period on a privately owned lot or. The same, same thing goes in, so, and we're going to find many places where it says "four times per year," and the same clause will be fit in. The next one occurs on page 21.
Yeah, but it should say, "Where the surface grilling, heating, or smoking area is ten." So you should not take that out.
Oh, excuse me, that one doesn't have the "or," you're right, I'm sorry.
Right.
So that one will not have the "or." It'll have "up to lot." So it will read, "Outdoor grilling occurring more than four times per any 12-month period on any, on a privately owned lot."
Property where the surface grilling, heating, or smoking area is 10.
And it'll continue on to where, with no "or" in that case.
Right.
Then on page 21 and on page 31, it will be exactly the same changes, because. Then on page 21 and on page 31, it will be exactly the same changes because the first one is the commercial zone, the second one is the industrial zone, and the third one is mixed use. So page seven, 21, 31 will be exactly as we indicated. Then we will jump to the South Brand section. Oh, excuse me, there's one more. On page 41, page 41 of the ordinance, I caught at the top of the page, the same section that Mike Garcia was referring to, where it's in the provisions that apply to grills that are more than 10 square feet, it says four times a year on any property. That should read four times in any 12-month period on any privately owned property.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
And then we will go to the South Brand plan provisions, which begin on page 57 of your ordinance. 57, page 57, at the top it says G, outdoor grilling occurring more than four times per year where the surface grilling is less than 10 square feet. In that case, it would be the, the first version, four times per 12-month period on any privately owned property or where the grilling surface has the or in it.
Yeah, that's right.
And in D, which follows, which is the, or more than 10 square feet, wherever it's more than 10 square feet, it isn't with the or. Wherever it is less than 10 square feet, it is with the or, and that's so confusing. But it, it, it's the same situation, it occurs again on page 59, in part G, four times per year, and that's less than, so it's with the or. Then on page 60, it occurs again in part E at the top, where it says more than four times per year where is more than, so there, there is no or in that case.
Right.
Page 61, C is four times per year where, and it's less than 10 square feet, so the or is included. Page 62, E in the center of the page, four times per year where is more than, so it's without the or. Page 64, number 38, is four times per year where it's less than 10 square feet, so it's with the or. And D in the center of the page is more, 10 square feet or more, so it is without the or.
Right.
And then we get to the final change on page 65, section 23, which was the SEQA provision, and I believe Mr. Garcia is going to read that one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, section 23 should read, "The city council finds that the proposed amendments will not have any significant environmental impacts as, as determined in the negative declaration approved by the city council," period. And then section 24, at the suggestion of Mr. Najarian, would read, "This ordinance shall sunset on and planning," I've just talked to Mr. Agani, suggests December 31st, 2007, that it's cleaner at the end of next year as opposed to doing it, but it's council's discretion.
So then you come back in December of 2007, and if there's any issues, we can revisit this, or, well, it sunsets, that means we have to adopt something new.
Right. Or it sunsets, yeah, it would go back to the old rule, which would be no grilling.
Right.
So it would, and I imagine staff would come back prior to that date.
Prior to that, okay, which will be probably about this time period before that comes.
So there's a motion to second with all those modifications? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Council members Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Montero?
No.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
No.
Does the motion fail or pass?
The motion fails.
I'm glad you went through the exercise of modification.
Did you guys say you were going to vote no so we didn't go through all that?
I said that.
They did.
We both said that.
They did.
Well, there was a new twist to it.
No, I said I'm philosophically against.
I thought my words may have persuaded you.
Well, you're a good attorney, but...
Not good enough.
Okay, 7B.
We have to address another issue, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Since there's no ordinance and we are not...
This was the grilling part.
Grilling, yes. Enforcing or continuing with the enforcement actions, what happens to those who are grilling outdoors, including the Montrose, Hawaiian Chicken, including...
Whole Foods.
Kewanas, some of the banquet halls.
I guess Mr. Engel now enforces.
I would like to suggest you realize that the ordinance does not apply to publicly owned property where there's a special...
Special event permit.
Event permit. So I'm assuming, I don't know if the Montrose...
Couple thoughts.
...here has a permit, I don't know.
Have a special event permit, yeah.
Kenneth Village, folks.
Okay. Good luck, Mr. Engel.
Well, I suggest we bring the banquet hall issues back up.
I already had the question that last week, Mr. Montero. Let's get it over with, get the whole thing back.
Well...
I mean, we, this was only one component of the banquet hall ordinance. Now we have to tackle the remainder of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, we will not be bringing the banquet facilities until at least mid to end of November because we have to get the downtown specific plan finished, and we're pretty tied up with that.
Okay, I just wanted the public to know, this deals with the outdoor grilling only.
The, the entire banquet facility matter, which is the deemed approved approach versus the covenants, will return...
Okay.
By the end of the year.
By the end of the year, that's good enough.
Well, I, I, I hope that, then now that we're not going to do this, we're not going to play this little game, we're going to do it with the banquet. The, the reason we separated this originally, because the grilling had nothing to do with the banquets. You could have grilling and you could be the Kewanas, just like you saw it, and they don't own a banquet hall. You could have been grilling and you could be the Montra Shopping Park. You don't do banquets. It was how food was prepared. Now, my colleagues do not want to do this, and let's not be hypocrite, if we're going to enforce the rule, let's enforce it on everyone, okay? And so, Mr. Engel, you go out there, you cite everyone who breaks the law, unless they are in a park or in a sidewalk, that they have a permit from Mr. City Clerk or Mr. Zern, everybody else is in violation unless they have their little grill in their home.
Well...
Am I right?
Mr. Mayor, I believe the council would have to give it a...
Are we going to enforce a five-square-foot grill someone has in the back?
Yeah, yeah, it says, under the rule, it says it is illegal.
Mr. Engel, can I barbecue in my backyard?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Second, 70,000 other households.
About the Kewanas truck at the Duck Splash this weekend.
That's in the park, that's okay.
It's in the park, it's public.
Mayor Weaver, members of the city council, I think we're hearing a consensus that you want us to make sure that those, those, the grilling types of things are included in any permits. I'm sorry.
Since really the issue of enforcement is not really, was not really part of the agenda, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want the public to think that there's a consensus on what the council thinks we should do about enforcement. My suggestion would be for us to bring back a report, because my understanding is that...
Currently, what is the...
Pardon me?
What's current laws?
Current laws, grilling.
What are we doing currently in terms of enforcement?
Mr. Engel.
And Mr. Engel can answer that question.
Yeah.
Mayor Weaver, members of the council, per direction that we received during the study session, enforcement on outdoor grilling was suspended pending the discussion tonight, and an action taken by the council pursuant to what you did at that study session doesn't require, from my mind, doesn't require the other action tonight because your direction is clear, is that we are now back in the enforcement mode. I would like to say otherwise, that on the public issues, those are addressed through the, the permits, whether the street use permits issued by Public Works, or the special events permit issued by the City Clerk's Office. I'm sure we will all make sure that if there is outdoor grilling, that they're included, and those types of things that you wanted to be addressed are included in requirements for that. And I will go back and ask the city attorney a very specific question that occurred to me tonight, which is when you have a commercial outdoor grill occur as a part of one of those public special events, and for my purposes for enforcement, I'm going to ask for an opinion from the city attorney on that later.
Yes, what, what we will do as a result of this is we will go back and we'll look at the existing ordinance very clearly, very thoroughly, and we'll make a, a clear determination on what is permitted and what is not, and we'll, we'll somehow communicate that back to council so that you're aware exactly what Mr. Engel is going to be compelled to be enforcing.
Okay, sounds good.
And I think it would be hypocritical for any of us who voted against this ordinance to then say, "Don't go and enforce it," because that's, you know...
Yep.
That, that's hypocritical.
Okay. Now, we have 7B. Did you read that in the record? I forget.
No. Mr. Mayor, do you want to just adjourn the special meeting?
Oh, yes. There's a motion to adjourn the special meeting. Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
To adjourn the special meeting.
Second.
Second. Special meeting is adjourned at 8:23 PM. Now, back to 7B.
7B is ordinance amending sections as listed of Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 and amending chapter nine and 10 of South Brand Boulevard's specific plan relating to land use offered at 101006 by council member Najarian.
Mr. Najarian?
I'll move 7B.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yusefian?
I had some issues with this, and...
Oh, I don't know, he's, I was looking for a second. Okay.
I had brought some issues to the staff, and staff had written me some of their explanation. One of the issues that I had brought, actually two of them, which I still have not received a satisfactory answer, is that using boarding school, I mean boarding houses, it is allowed in multifamily. It is just generally allowed in multifamily. So you could have a boarding house in any of the multifamily areas, but if it's a historic multifamily, you need a conditional use permit. The thing that I couldn't understand is, in many places, when I go someplace, and if there's a boarding house or bed and breakfast, generally happens to be in a historic building that has tried to basically breathe some life into it. And so now you're saying, if you're a historic house, or a historic multifamily duplex or a triplex, don't preserve it because you're going to have to go through one more step of a conditional use permit while you could have just had, if you were not, you could just do it automatically, it's permitted.
Mr. Wilson, I thought all these concerns were addressed.
Yes, actually, you had pointed out a contradiction, which we did, in our memo, agree with you, and then it didn't make the change, or no, it's in the, it's in the...
Make the change?
No, it is in the resolution, that a use within historic resources, this is on page four.
Okay.
Boarding or lodging houses in the multifamily zones are permitted, as they always have.
Where is it, where is it on the charts?
It's page four of the ordinance.
The very first line, it says uses within historic resources. This is continuing what's currently in the code, that they're already permitted in a historic building or not.
Okay, I'm looking, I'm looking at the chart. I'm looking at page four on all the charts.
Yes, sir.
And all I see is nothing but a bunch of Cs, which that means all conditional use permit.
We have, it looks like you have a C under R 3050, but then permitted under 2250, 1650, 1250.
I don't know which page.
Page four of 7B.
Was that intended, Tim?
Yes, because the, at present, the code permits, as of right, boarding houses in the R 2250, R 1650, and R 1250 zones. We've continued that permission in the historic resources.
And you did not allow it on 3050?
It was not permitted. I'm looking at the existing code right here.
Okay.
It was only permitted in those three.
Okay, so you put that back in.
Yes, we corrected that inconsistency that you raised.
Okay, and how about the issue with retirement homes and rest homes?
Retirement homes are, and rest homes are considered institutional uses, they're not the same as market housing or senior housing is market housed, like market housing, it has kitchens and it has individual units. Retirement homes have state regulations that apply to them and have nursing help and often don't have any kitchen facilities in the individual units. So we felt that we should maintain the difference that exists today in the, in the zoning code. We have not changed what's in the present code, but if in future you want us to reexamine that, we thought that would be something we would look at at another time, but not at this point, because what we were doing was just translating the existing permission in the existing code into the new.
Right, but the difference between, in 2250, for example, what is the difference between a retirement home and, I understand what you're saying, but from the outside, if it's designed properly, you can't tell the difference.
Well, sometimes they do look different.
I mean, the concern is the look, right?
Sometimes they look different, but I think we're also concerned about the parking requirement. The parking requirement for retirement homes is based on, I think, one for four beds, or for senior housing, it's one per unit.
So you require that.
There's a different parking requirement.
So you require that, and they built it according to that. What I'm trying to understand is, in my head is, you know, what's the difference? If you build a building that is consistent in design with all the multifamilies that is around, and it has the parking that's required, what does it matter whether the senior inside is getting a nurse to help him or not?
Well, I guess it, it came down to, the present code today permits retirement and rest homes only as of right in the R 1650 and the R 1250 zone, and senior housing is permitted conditionally in the present code in R 3050 through 1250. When we took it through planning commission, they felt that that conditional permission should be changed to an as-of-right permission, so there was a change in the code.
Right.
And that was the one that was heard at the hearings. At this point, we, we weren't feeling that the, the more institutional requirement for retirement and rest homes should be as of right added into the R 3050 and the R 2250 without further consideration, because those zones often have a lot of single-family homes and function more like single-family areas. It was just a, a question of the institutional versus the more market-driven uses. If council wishes to change that, we can.
I just wanted to...
We just didn't feel that they were the same uses.
Yes, clarification, Mr. Montero.
No, they're, absolutely, they're not the same uses. The intensified use, you've got administrators, nurses, at least one per shift, sometimes more than one, then you've got attendants, so the use is totally different. You may even have transportation in terms of hospitalized residents, so it's two different uses.
Okay. More questions?
No, that's it.
There's a motion?
Trying to figure out what...
And a second?
Have your questions been answered?
Yeah. Well, I, I understand the logic behind, I, I couldn't understand one from the other.
Right.
And, and I think what they're saying is apparently on these, I think the answer to me is that they're closer to a single-family residential, and that, I think that's the answer that I'm buying. I'm still not buying, you could have two separate buildings, you will never know what the difference is on the inside, but yeah, it's closer to a single family, and you may have some issues with that. That I can understand, and the other one's been resolved, I think that's fine.
Okay, no further questions, roll call.
Council members Menucha?
No.
Najarian?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Next, please.
Eight is action items. At 8A is Director of Administrative Services regarding utility users tax, UUT exemption for low-income individuals with disabilities. At 8A1 is ordinance for introduction.
Thank you. As you said, an ordinance for introduction, Mr. McCall.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is based on a previous request from council with a previous report given. Mr. Franz is here to provide a update on changes that have been made if council would so like a report.
Well, we have a couple speakers. About listening to the speakers, and then maybe you have something to respond to. Okay, start out, we'll try the two minutes each. Mike Nagel and Mr. Yusefian.
Mr. Mayor, last time I abstained from deliberation, so I will be consistent with last time, so I will abstain from deliberation.
Leaving here? You're going in the back room?
I'll be back room.
Going to watch us on TV?
I'll wait until you call me back.
On TV. Okay, Mike.
Are you going to abstain? Did you abstain last time?
I don't remember.
I'm not saying you should, but I think you...
I could. Do you want me to?
No. No, I welcome your input.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
What do we need on this, three or four?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it would affect any person, my, not immediate family, but
Okay. Oh, yeah.
What do we need on this? Three or four?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it would affect any person, my, not immediate family, but extended family.
This one takes three, right?
Does it take three?
Okay.
It takes three. It's not affecting zoning or anything of that nature. So, it's a...
Okay.
Free votes.
Finally, Mike Nagel, follow by Bonnie Adams.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, and staff. My name's Mike Nagel. I just wanted to point out some errors that seem to come out with the report that, for this utility user tax. We get a low estimate, a very low estimate, of the number of people this would apply to, even in the least-case scenario. Today, oh, I beg your pardon. Today, I got a copy of a report from the County of Los Angeles Health Department concerning adult disability in Los Angeles, and it came out with several statistics that seem to contradict that very, very low estimate of the people who'd be affected on this. Here are copies for the thing. I'm using data from this table to make an estimate of my own based on the population of Glendale. The estimate that I come up with is quite a bit different. Okay, our population is 207,589, according to the number I actually got from a city council meeting here. Approximately 7% of our country is between the ages of 55 and 62, which will be affected by this change. Of that population, of that portion of the population in LA County, 29.9% are disabled and 28.4% of all disabled are below the poverty level. Applying these numbers, we end up with 14,000 Glendale residents between those ages, 4,330 that are disabled between those ages, and a total of 1,230 that are disabled in the age range and below the poverty level. That's quite a bit higher than 192, which is what the report reported. Nonetheless, I still do want this to pass. I still do want to endorse this, the utility user credit as you're going. I just feel personally that it should be extended farther.
Staff will address it when they, I thought I wanted them to listen to you first.
Thank you.
Bonnie Adams?
I'm Bonnie Adams. I'm not good at numbers, but, at all, but Mike really is, and I'd go with his numbers. But I wanted to clear up something for Mr. Menuchaian and Mr. Yusefian, who left the room, I guess.
I haven't left.
No, he's still here.
Okay.
Menuchaian, that is.
Mr. Menuchaian, okay. If, I don't care if you have a brother or an uncle, or nepotism doesn't play a part in this. If you have an uncle or a brother or a sixth cousin twice-removed that is receiving public assistance from SSI or SSDI or whatever he's doing and living within a certain guideline, there is no reason, I mean, just because you're related to that person, he is, you, I mean, they're eligible for assistance. That's the law. That is the law. There is no argument about that. I mean, I've lived in this system for years. I have a lot of relatives that are in certain places, but they, I'm on my own assistance. I'm on public assistance. It has nothing to do, I just wanted to clarify for that, you guys. Because, so abstaining from voting doesn't necessarily, you know, solve this problem. So, Mr. Yusefian, you can come back, you know, because it doesn't, it has nothing to do with it. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And so, thank you.
Thank you. No more cards. Mr. Franz, would you like to respond at all to the inaccuracy or the discrepancy in the numbers?
Yes. I think one of the points we've tried to make is that it's very difficult to prepare estimates. If you recall the last meeting, there were two speakers, one who said they thought our numbers were too high, the other speaker said they thought our numbers were too low. It is a matter of estimating. I can't address some of the specifics on how we came up with the 192, and that is based on...
Well, let me, if I may, Mr. Mayor, let me read the report, so we all know where the 192 number came from. And it says there are currently 192 low-income participants with disabilities in the GWP senior care program. So, it's not an estimate that, an estimate that you've made, but it's the current participants in the GWP senior care program.
Exactly.
Just to clarify.
And that's, that is, that is based on real experience. So, 192, now...
They made an estimate, so if anything, it may be higher, may be close to...
Well, and it will. It will be higher, because that is only the group age 55 to 62. There's also the group over age 62 that currently are in the GWP program, receiving a discount, who may be service users or persons with disabilities. So, there will be more than 192.
But where we're at is, we don't know yet the magnitude of the cost. I think that's where we talked option one, to find out.
Right.
Till we settle in and find out where this is taking us.
Exactly. And we said in the staff report that our approach is to recommend a go-slow approach, because we are just using estimates, and the numbers are in the staff report. We think they're based on, in some cases, some pretty good numbers, but in other cases, they are truly estimates.
Or putting our foot in the water, find out how cold it is.
Correct.
Or hot. Okay. Any other questions?
I just want to clarify, does this call for people who currently are on disability? I mean, that was one of the ideas that I was interested in, people currently on disability, receiving SSI. Yes. We put that in the ordinance, actually, in the language of the ordinance for the criteria, which is what you're referring to. And, okay, that's good enough. And it's only for the City of Glendale's utility tax, not the phone company or anybody else, and we can't keep track of.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Franz. Is there a motion on 8A1? Or, no, excuse me, somebody want to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Thank you. Let us next, please.
At 8B is Director of Administrative Services regarding adjustments to the adopted 2006-07 Glendale Water and Power Budget. At 8B1, resolution of appropriation.
Mr. McFaul?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think you may want to invite another council member back in.
Oh, yeah. Garcia, would you tell him to turn the TV off? See, he was watching it.
Tell him until he called.
He was calling, so I was going to call him. He was watching us on TV.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Again, this is an item that is, previously came to the city council at the, the first time we made the report. It's clear the report didn't fully explain the nature and circumstances behind this request. At that time, we indicated that staff would take it back and clarify the report, and that we also would have the internal audit thoroughly go through the numbers, the transactions, somewhat get to the bottom of what had happened that has resulted in the requirement of this budget adjustment. That has been done, and with that, Mr. Franz is prepared to go through the report with the city council, and ultimately for your consideration.
Your internal audit team is here? Recovered.
Yes, we have representatives from GWP that are here, of course, Mr. Franz.
We have GWP, too.
And also the internal auditor and the auditor who actually performed the work on this.
Thank you, Mr. McFaul. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, you really have two reports in your agenda package. One is from the Finance Department on the budget amendment that is being recommended, and second is the internal audit report that goes through in several pages, looking at, independently looking at the recommended changes. I wanted to back up here. We, Mr. McFaul talked about the prior report that was on the agenda in August and the council's request for additional information. But going back even prior to that, during the budget process this year, obviously, the reason for the need for this budget amendment is that something was left out of the recommended budget. So, the real question for us, and I know for you, is why were those things left out? There is no good answer for that. It was a mistake. We take full responsibility for it. We actually, in preparing the budget, we had information at a certain point in time during June that we should have, that we were aware, that one large piece of what is in front of you tonight, we were aware was omitted from the recommended budget. In retrospect, that should have been brought up to you at your June 20 meeting, prior to adoption. There's no, there's no defensible reason at this point why we didn't at least mention that. I will tell you, just again, backing up through the process, that our reasoning at the time was that we knew that, in addition to the water part of the budget that needed to be amended, which was the 2.8 million, we knew that that amendment needed to be made. We were also aware that there were a number of other smaller errors and omissions in the GWP budget. So, our approach at that time was, we need to take the time to make sure we have identified all of the errors, omissions, no matter how small or how large, and bring them all to you at the same time. As you may recall, that's not an unusual process. Every year, we will bring you a budget amendment in August or September that we do budget cleanup. We clean up errors and omissions. It just so happens that, in this case, it was a larger number, the dollar amount was larger. And also, the report that was before you really didn't provide enough detail to answer some of the obvious questions. So, we, staff takes full responsibility for that. We have taken some action to change the process in the future, so that we can more timely get the input from the departments on changes that need to be plugged into the process. We actually have a budget calendar, which should allow for that, but this year and in the past few years, we have really gotten overwhelmed by some of the complexities that we have added to the budget, and also the budget study session process. So, that's kind of the, you know, the part I wanted to make sure you were clear on, is that this is something that, you know, should not have happened, and we are trying to take steps to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Mr. Franz, knowing that a budget is simply a best estimate of how the money will be expended, revenue stream will come in, money will be expended during the budget year.
Right.
Would those adjustments that you found, would they in any way have changed, or could they have changed our budgetary decisions if we had that information?
No, and thank you for that question, because that really leads to the second major point I wanted to make, which is that the budget amendments that are before you this evening, if approved, will be the same as, will leave the budget the same as the presentations that were made to you by the GWP staff when you were considering significant GWP actions relating to electric and water rates. So, they had the numbers correctly reflected in the study session they had with the council, as we not only went over in study session their budget, but even beyond that, the rate actions that were presented to you for their budget. What this is, in effect, doing is catching up the formal adopted budget to what was presented to you for those decisions.
Okay, thank you.
So, with that, I would be glad to go through any questions you have on the details. And as Mr. McFaul said, we have the staff here that can add any questions.
I, I've reviewed the detail. I don't want you to go through, I personally don't. But what I want to ask is, with now the net effect of the changes of 500,000, is the budget still in balance? Do we still have a balanced budget with these changes?
Yes.
The second question is, some of the changes or the omitted entry that you have made, was that entry, or what was the budget for the maintenance and operations of the water in the previous years? Is it, is it within the same range? I mean, that line item was there before. It wasn't there this year when we adopted it, and that's what basically happened.
Right, in the formal adoption.
Right, and in the past, there wasn't, the amount that was budgeted in the past and the amount that was, that you're proposing to include this time, is it, how much different is it? Is there an increase, decrease? Do you know that amount?
There's an increase on both the electric and the water budget, the total budgets, and I don't have that dollar amount in front of me, but...
But it is a line item that was there last year. It's not something you're creating this year. It's not something that you're putting in and...
No, it's, it's the amount, the large amount, the largest amount in this amendment, the 2.8 million for the water fund, was included in prior years. So...
Okay.
The fact that it's not in the current adopted budget is really an omission and a reduction from prior year adopted water budgets.
I don't have any other questions if there are.
Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Franz, I don't want to see this happen again. It's very, it's very upsetting that we would get incomplete information due to, clearly, it's not any intentional error, but just a carelessness, I think, for double-checking. Puts the council in an embarrassing spot, and as well as our city manager, our sitting city manager as well, our assistant city manager. It's just bad. We should be better. I mean, we should be running a tighter ship. I know that our finance department can do much better work than this. You've tackled much more difficult tasks with these, rather than the actual compiling of the budget numbers, which is, it looks where we went, went wrong, at least in one of the departments, one of the areas that the audit, that the audit highlighted. So, just don't let it happen again. I don't know what I can say. I don't want to beat you on the head, but we do expect better. We know you're capable of much better work, you and your entire department, so please, please keep up your...
I think the internal audit has taken, made some recommendations to tighten the ship, so to speak, for next year, so unlikely it'll happen again. I have a card. Okay, thank you, Mr. Franz. One speaker, Barry Allen, two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council, staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. I commend Mr. Menuchaian for catching this a few weeks ago, and for Mr. Ayler's was caught as the deer in the headlights, and Mr. Najarian, you're absolutely right. However, this council has set the standard for the lack of accountability. Back on the 2004 audit with the outside auditor, you just voted to receive the report, receive and file, instead of looking at the $50 million of questionable numbers that were in that report. So, from that, staff just says, hey, they're not going to look at anything anyways, so we can do anything we want. And by God, they're right. Had it not been for Mr. Menuchaian catching that, and part of the catch was because the numbers were out of sequence and out of order, it was very obvious that there was a problem. Otherwise, it would be, we'll introduce it and we'll accept it, and the story. But there are holes, and there is a lack of accountability, because the different departments look at this council and say, they're not going to do anything. We need to have you question each of the items on consent calendar. We need to have you question the numbers that come before you, and we need to have you look at your packets when you get them, not listen to what's happening here at the council and throwing a couple of quick quips in. The reason that this, that the people of this community have voted for you was because you said you were going to watch out for their interests. You were going to read your packets, you were going to react to them, and you're going to question staff on these items. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard, looking for accountability. Thank you.
Mr. McFaul can go first.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, certainly, the council can defend themselves, but I know that I speak for the entire executive staff and others involved in the budget process, that no manner at all do we in any way believe... that in no manner at all do we in any way believe that the city council has set any kind of a poor example of accountability. To the contrary, this and the previous city council has endorsed extremely rigorous accountability standards, including ensuring that we have the largest staff of internal auditors of any city of our type in any city that we are aware of, and regularly directs those auditors to look very directly and intimately and deeply into the operations of the city and report back to the council. You've passed an ordinance that requires that to come directly to the, to the council, and we feel appropriately and regularly challenged by council to do better and be accountable with the numbers that you, you provide.
Well, I, I know one of the best votes I've ever made up here in 10 years is voting to create the internal audit positions, so thank you very much.
If I may, Mr....
Mr. Menuchyan?
I agree and disagree with Mr. Allen. We are here to watch over the, we do have a fiduciary duty in terms of watching over the funds from the, for the taxpayers. However, and I say this as a, as a professional accountant, as certified public accountant, there's no way anyone up here can go through the budget line by line and make sure that everything is in there. Unless we leave our daytime responsibilities and sit here instead of staff and do the work ourselves, there's no way we can guarantee that everything is included in the budget that should be included. My concern is the way the reports were prepared last time, and you are correct, and from now on, the journal entries that are, that are being presented to the council should be prepared in a proper manner, regardless of the titles and all of that, but we should know where the, where the money's coming from, where it's going, and the reclassifications and all of that. I want to also commend the staff. It takes a noble individual to come up and say that there was a mistake made and we're working, working on it, and we will fix it. And I think that the most important, regardless of what, what is netted, and I agree in terms of the, the results that were, that were reported by the internal audit in terms of the net effect, in the whole picture of the budget and the whole picture of the Glendale Water and Power budget, which is approximately $300 million if it's not more, the 500,000 net change is, is not substantial. However, there is something in the process that was not followed, and I think that's more important than the actual numbers themselves and the net effect. And I would expect that, that process, even though there are some recommendations by the internal audit, and they know as well as I do that that's not where it stops, the process has to be looked over carefully, much more carefully. If there are items that you need the council to address in terms of timing of the budget, in terms of more study sessions, and, you know, I have to say that the budget becomes a political issue sometimes, and we have study sessions during the week on Tuesdays. Sometimes we can't make it, we do it on Wednesdays, and staff is here, is not here, or we are here, sometimes we're not here. If there is any way we can have input into the timing of preparing the budget, if that's something that we have to address as a council, I think you should bring it up in front of council and we can address it. We're unwilling to work with staff to, if we need to address the processes in terms of the council, to make it better and to make it, and to give staff more time to prepare the budget accurately. So I'm confident that the majority of the items are estimated amounts that we have to deal with, that would be addressed, and the line item that was missed, should not have been missed, but I do appreciate the fact that you are accepting responsibility for what it was and will, will go on from there, so. So would that all make the motion?
I think be one.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor. I also have some comments.
Okay.
I think it's important for us to realize that a couple of things happened. Things like this don't happen in a vacuum. One of the reasons, and I've been here since 2001, and since 2001, unless this last year, we used to start our budget sessions earlier.
Right.
So there was a little bit more time to evaluate all this information, to regurgitate it. In the end of the day, staff had more time to go back and put things together and come back to us, and there was more time for Mr. Franz to send stuff to departments and departments come back and say, oops, we made a mistake here, we made a mistake there, and so on and so forth. Also, within that five years I've been here, we have changed the budget process itself, the way we list the budget, the way the budget is written, the way it's organized, the different accounts we created, and made this a little bit simpler so the average individual, it's easier to understand. They get a budget book about this tick, they want to know what the police department does, goes to police department, everything is there, they don't have to go back and forth different pages. So all of that took some times. I was concerned when we started late this year, and I was wondering at what point we're going to get this thing adopted, because we didn't have study sessions, we just wouldn't have any study sessions. And I knew the crunch was going to come and we're going to have some issues, and this is one of the things that happens. Now, beside the 2.8 million dollars, there's other issues that has caused that. There's about 4.7 million dollars just in the final charges submitted, not incorporated into the budget, so there was 4.7 that wasn't incorporated. And the reason it wasn't incorporated is because we didn't get back to them at the right time, so they weren't able to say, by the way, here's more, we forgot, and here it is. And that's how we didn't get it. Now, on this item, I had one issue. It says capital request without proper classification or account coding. So without proper, is a capital request without proper classifications. Why don't you have a proper classification?
We, Mr. Franz can express that. We, we do have a proper classification. It was how it was classified wasn't done properly. It just required it being reclassified.
Improperly classified. Okay, so these are capital requests which were improperly classified. Is that what the heading should be?
Yes.
Okay, because the way I read this heading is that you actually have a category for things that are not proper, and you're giving them money, and I'm like, why are they doing this?
An example is a, a incorrect code may list the item as a capital outlay request when it should have been an equipment replacement request. So this resolution will...
This modifies and adjusts that.
Just transfers the money from the capital to the equipment replacement.
Okay, okay. But nevertheless, even that was not part of the thing because that was about 1.7 million dollars. So I understand the net revenue is only 504,000, which is going to come from GWP budget.
Right.
I'm assuming, okay. Is that going to modify their reserves? Is this coming from reserves, or is this coming from operations?
No, actually, that increase was, at the time we presented you with estimated reserves, we were assuming that 500,000 was in the budget, so it does not affect our estimated reserves.
Okay, so this is one of those scenarios that you are so close to it that you breed it, live it, and you know about it, and you automatically assume that we can also read your mind.
Well, well, it, and it's, it's, of course, it's a lot more complicated than that. We have really...
It's always been in the budget. It's not like it wasn't, it wasn't a budget, it, when it was presented, it was just left out. It's not a matter of adding something new.
Right, but there's 500, I mean, there's a 500,000 that's not in the budget, so it's going to be in the budget, and the numbers are going to be in a different place.
It's always in the budget, that's the whole point. It just was left out.
It was in the budget planning and the presentations we made to you. It didn't get into the budget resolution to adopt the budget.
Right.
Okay, okay.
That was the error.
All right.
Okay.
And that's fine, and I, I think if you had come back last time with a very good report, whoever was responsible for report, I must say they're great, and for rest of the people in the audience and on camera, I do read every page, because I do think that is part of my job to read every page. Staff puts it together, it's my job to read it and ask questions. And you've noticed, even though our mayor sometimes gets upset at me, if I need to ask a question, I ask a question. I'm not shy about it, because I was told the stupid question is the one you don't ask. So I ask my questions.
Mr. Yusefian, it's just not me. Your colleagues also approach me about it, so...
That's fine. They can approach, all of them can approach you.
Make sure that it's all of us collectively, not just me.
Do you guys have an issue with me asking questions?
No, I think you should ask more.
Okay.
Because if you guys don't want me to ask questions, it's very easy. I would stop reading.
But I don't think it's about... Questions, Mr. Yusefian, I think it's about statements, you know? Questions are fine. It's about statements that go on and on. That's what I think the issue is, not asking questions. Everybody wants you to ask questions.
Phil, shall we get to a roll call?
I just want to, since it was raised by Mr. Yusefian, and I don't want to remain quiet, quiet and have anyone make an assumption, I can state honestly and under oath if necessary. I pick up my packet as soon as it's available. On Thursdays, I'm calling the city clerk's office, find out where the packet is, and I spend all weekend reading it, in case anyone...
All weekend?
All weekend.
Throughout the weekend. I take a few breaks, but...
To eat and stuff.
And I read the paper version, I lug this thing around and...
Now we're really getting off target.
You guys have put me on the side.
We better, we better do a roll. Can we do a roll call?
Just, yes, you can, just the five seconds. You have, you have a tremendous professional finance staff. They don't like to make mistakes, and we're going to work very hard to ensure this doesn't, doesn't happen again.
Can we do a roll call now?
Council members, Menuchyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. Next, please.
Well, HC was pulled by staff, so we moved to nine, which is hearings, and at nine A is director of plan continued from nine, 1906, regarding proposed ordinance amending Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code relating to density bonus for affordable housing, zone change number 2006-08, and establishing new fees associated with density bonus incentives, 9A1 resolution adopting a negative declaration, 9A2 ordinance for introduction, and 93 resolution adopting new fees.
Okay, Mr. Paul is going to...
We'll go right to Elaine Lookerson.
Now we'll write to Tim Foey.
For a brief report?
For a very brief report.
Who wears many hats? Grilling?
Okay, I, this implements Senate Bill number 1818 and some amendments to it. I put the state legislation up here to begin with, so I know the council's already adopted an interim ordinance about this, so you already know this, but for members of the public, this is something that we are mandated by the state to do. What they're about to see is a somewhat permissive ordinance, but the city council has very little discretion due to the state legislature on this. What it mandates is density bonuses and other incentives or concessions for affordable housing, senior housing, or childcare facilities. It is a percentage increase in the density over what's otherwise allowed. It applies to these various income categories and senior housing for five units or more. The larger the number of units, the larger the density bonus, and so on. There's, Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Garcia, made this out in a very easy to read chart. I hope you had a chance to look at. And it's basically we have to give waivers of zoning code development standards or modify them. More incentives for the more affordable units and so on. Now, developers can request incentives based on how many units they're providing, either one, two, or three they're, so to speak, entitled to. Oh, I'm sorry, this is parking. These are available to all projects of any size, and the approval is automatic. This is something we have no choice on. It reduces the number of spaces per unit, changes the standards, and applies to all units of the project, not just the affordable ones. There's various rules on which, which of these can be sold and which must be leased. And this is an example, if you have any questions, we can go over it, but basically, generally people get, start with a 20% density bonus. And now the review authority, this we do have some option on. The urgency ordinance you adopted in July allows the zoning administrator to approve these all administratively. This ordinance for you today changes that only slightly in that if a developer asks for more than what they're entitled to, then it would be a zoning administrator public hearing. Otherwise, since there is so little discretion that we're given, it's staff's recommendation that this not be a public hearing. That is something that the planning commission disagreed with us on. The planning commission felt this should always be a public hearing. It was our feeling that having a public hearing gives the impression that we're going to be able to take the public's concerns into account in ways that we can't, and it just, it didn't seem a wise course.
Well, just to be clear, in case anyone's listening, that SB 1818 is going to preclude us from, after the public hearing and everyone's input, it literally wouldn't matter because we're going to have to follow the, the state law.
Exactly. We would have to prove that these incentives are not required in order to deny them. So that was...
So let me understand this. If public hearing, the input doesn't mean anything, why have a public hearing?
Right.
I mean, basically state says, you must do this. I don't care, you scream, you holler, you show up to the public hearing, you don't... So why have a public hearing? What's the purpose of that?
Yeah, the law gives them, gives a developer, they're, so to speak, entitled to a certain number of incentives based on how many affordable units. They can ask for more. The ones that they're entitled to, in order to say no, we have to prove they're not needed. But the ones that are extra, the fourth, fifth, and sixth ones they're asking for, then they have to prove, the onus goes onto them, onto the developer, that they need it. And at that point, we would suggest a public hearing.
Okay, so at that point, you can do that?
Yes.
All right. And that's how the ordinance is written?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And we discussed some alternatives with the design review board about possibly trying to steer people towards some design incentives, not others, but as they're getting their input, it just kind of didn't gel into a whole. So we'd rather see what people really ask for and then maybe explore that option later. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Oh, yes, fees, I'm sorry, yes. There's also fee resolution. We, I think, have set this, there's, we would charge...
We have another...
I'm sorry, yeah. The community development housing department would review an agreement just to make sure that it's, you know, the proper timeframes and all are in there. We charge a minimal fee of $200. For the planning review, we would do it same as other types of administrative reviews, If we do want to review the economic need for these incentives, we would charge $500 in case we need to. If we don't use it, we would refund it. So the total fee for this would be, range from 900, about $931. The initial cost would be 1,431. Most people would probably get the $500 back.
What I'm trying to understand is, why do you even have fees? State put all these rules in to create more affordable housing. It's going to be in conjunction with a new development, okay? You're already charging the development for permit fees, subdivision fees, plan check fees, every fee under the sun, so what else is there that you need to charge this other fee to do what?
I mean, the first two things...
You have to grant it to him, so what fee is that? What, what do you do for that $731?
Review the density bonus housing plan. Use the density bonus housing plan.
But you already are dealing with the project as a whole. It's a housing plan, so, you know, it's 200 units, and let's say 30 of those units are affordable. So, okay, so it's 1818, you have to do it.
I guess we felt that when there are people asking for incentives to the zoning code, they could have impacts on neighbors, and it was incumbent upon staff to at least do some level of review to make sure--
Well, my problem is, things like this, that we may think not much of, and few cities go start doing things like this, and next thing you know, some developers go to the state, they complain, and next thing you know, they come up with a legislation, but it doesn't just end this fees, taps a whole bunch of other fees. And then we come back and say, gee, you know, the state legislation just took more authority away from us. Now, I just feel like, let's not take off the big boys up in Sacramento. You know, they passed a law, they said it's what it is. It's an affordable housing, you're trying to do this. Don't put, I mean, it's nothing. It's like $1,400, not much. So I don't know.
My comment was, like, for example, on the, Mr. Mayor, the view of the density bonus housing plan includes things like where the units would be, the affordable units would be in the overall development plan. Would they be in one location, or would they be scattered? What would be the amenities of the units? Those sorts of things that the ordinance directs the Director of Community Development and Housing to review. So basically, her staff would be reviewing that, as well as the density bonus housing agreement, and that does take up staff time.
We just saw one today during redevelopment agency. It was 200 units. What is the fees you get from that 200 units?
In that case, it was, yeah, $3 million. But again, that was just a plan regarding payment of fees. When you're actually going to build the units, there's probably a little bit more work involved for staff to look at the overall plan.
Yeah, but what I mean, as far as the permit fees is concerned, it's pretty hefty amount. It's, you know, you guys, they're paying over half a million dollars probably between permit fees, or $300,000, something of that nature. So I don't know. I just think that, you know, in a small unit, you're going to look at a 14 unit, you know, 1818, there may be one or two. I don't think there's much analysis where that unit's going to go. It's very small. On a large unit, the amount of fees we collect from the guy, you know, it's just, I think we just put one more step out there for them to have an excuse saying, well, you know, I don't know. You guys can do whatever you want.
I say charge them. They're getting a hefty bonus on their density, and show me the developer that's going to come crying over that. And I don't want staff or the city to subsidize any one iota of developing and reviewing their plan, because they are getting a generous gift by the state legislature.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the reason that this fee was proposed, and there are cities that might opt actually not to charge a fee as a pro-housing, affordable housing policy. However, the SB 1818 requirements, as simple as Tim Foy and Mr. Garcia have made it for all of us to understand, is actually a very complicated piece of legislation, and there are sliding scales for concessions and for the levels of density that are required. And that requires sometimes pretty in-depth analysis. And this was just one way to recuperate some of the staff costs, and the council obviously has the option of not charging a fee.
LA not only is not charging, they're actually giving them incentives, money on top of that. So if you want them created, how many people we've had in here clamoring for this? How many applications have you had for this?
One so far.
One, SB 1818? And how many units do they want to add?
It was the affordable housing project on San Fernando for Seaver Policy.
Yeah, but that's an affordable housing to begin with.
But they actually used this legislation.
How many have you had that was not affordable? I mean, they did this for a different reason. They did it for code issue.
I think that's the only one we've had so far.
Yeah. I don't think you're going to get them.
Okay, enough discussion?
Not because of our fees, though, because they don't know about it.
Can I open the public hearing now? You have any cards? Open the public hearing? I have no cards. Public hearing is closed. Thank you. Well, there's 9A1, 2, and 3.
Move 9A1, 2, 3.
No, no, can't do that. 9A1 first.
I'll second it.
2's the ordinance.
Okay, roll call on 9A1.
Which was moved by Councilmember Najarian, seconded by Councilmember Quintero.
Yes.
Councilmembers Mnuchin.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Does somebody want to introduce the ordinance at 9A2?
Introduce the ordinance.
Thank you. 9A3, is there a motion?
You can't do a fee until you adopt the ordinance.
Why is it on here?
What if the ordinance doesn't pass? You can't have a fee in place.
Respect.
We went through this before.
Yeah, it seems familiar, doesn't it?
That's right.
It's getting late.
You can put a condition in the resolution that it's not effective. So the ordinance is, and we can bring it back as well.
That's what Scott did with us last time.
Take it off and bring it back.
We'll hear it from Mr. Mnuchin for another week, I mean, Mr. Yusefian, for another week then, about those fees.
Sorry about that.
Okay. That takes care of 9. What's next?
Is there any new business?
You're jumping ahead.
Second.
Seems like it's--
It's moving to second word, June 9, 17 p.m.